Welcome, everyone, to the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, December 15, 2014. Before we begin, Commissioner Nagel would like to make a statement.
I would like to read an email that I sent to Dan Sherry this morning. This is what it said. "I would like to express my sincere apologies to Dan Sherry for my outburst at the last Commissioners' meeting. What I said was a result of frustration and not directed towards anyone in particular. I intend to work on my self-control in the future and to make concerted effort to increase the civil discourse among the Board of Commissioners and with township residents. I am firmly committed to assuring that the public has ample opportunity to speak on matters before the Board. Signed, John Nagel, Commissioner Ward, V."
Thank you, Commissioner Nagel, for your apology. I appreciate your acknowledgement and your recognition of the gravity of the mistake. And I'd like to just, I think this is an opportune moment to, once again, articulate that it is our duty as Board members to maintain the highest level of civility and respect and decorum, and it is what our residents expect from us, and it is what our residents deserve from us. So here's to a better 2016. Fifteen, excuse me. Okay, I have two announcements. Yeah, right. I have two announcements to make before we begin. The first is in regard to the request from Commissioner Fisher to have a discussion of our conditional use process put on this agenda. It will be on our very next agenda. Given the condensed time period, we had a Monday meeting and then a Monday meeting. It was very difficult for, a little too much to ask of our staff to put together the memo and the briefing for that in three days because our packets are posted on Thursday. So the request was made late Monday night, and on Thursday, the packet was due. So, in order to have a more productive discussion with the issue having been briefed to us, we're going to have it in the very first meeting in January. My second announcement is that we had scheduled a special meeting for the 22nd, next Monday. That meeting is canceled. We will not be adopting that mileage increase. Under Old Business Tonight, we will have a thorough explanation of why from our staff and our bond helper. But I just wanted to upfront let everyone know so that you can now, you know, if you were looking forward to coming to that meeting, it is now canceled. Okay, we are going to start with public participation, as always, and I'd like to remind everyone that this, first, this public participation in the beginning of the meeting is offered as a courtesy for those of you who cannot stay through the meeting. And our regular public comment is meant to occur after our discussion and before each vote, or at the end of the meeting, and this initial public comment is offered for those of you who have family obligations and can't stay through the meeting. So, thank you, and hello, Mr. Sherry.
Good evening. Dan Sherry, Wayne. I'd just like to start at the beginning of this meeting because it was led off by John Nagel's apology that Commissioner Schaefer warmly accepted. The person who that comment, for whatever reason, wasn't stated by John Nagel, was addressed to was me. And that comment was, as reported in the press, "Somebody shoot you," directed to me. I think it's important, before we delve into why I don't consider John Nagel's remark to be an apology, to actually give some context as to how that statement came about. Because to provoke that type of invective, one might very well have thought that I had gotten up here and insulted every single female member of John Nagel's family. Here's what led up to the "somebody shoot you" remark. By way of brief background, I had been addressing an inquiry that Commissioner Booker had made at a prior meeting, which was the amount that the Radnor Conservancy was contributing to the Ardrossan Purchase. This picks up 55 minutes into the meeting, so the meeting wasn't even an hour old. Sherry, "So the Conservancy has pledged approximately $100,000. Is that accurate?" Commissioner Schaefer, "No, it's under $100,000." Sherry, "Under $100,000? Well, under $100,000 could be 50 cents, it could be $50,000." Commissioner Nagel, interrupting, "Point of order, this has nothing to do with the motion before us." Sherry, "Conservancy was brought up," well, by the way, the person raising the point of order is himself a former executive director of the Radnor Conservancy. I'd just like to put that out there. Commissioner Nagel, "Point of order, what's the bearing? What's this have to do with the matter before us?" Sherry, "Thank you for the comment for explanation." Nagel, "Somebody shoot you." Then following is this exchange. Sherry, "Excuse me, point of order, what was that? Point of order, what was that? That did not get a rebuke from the Chair? That did not get a rebuke from the Chair?" Rice, John Rice, "Mr. Sherry, why don't you finish up? You've got five minutes." Sherry, "That's not the parliamentarian who's now telling me to finish up, that's John Rice. There's no camera on my face now, but I heard the word 'shoot' from John Nagel directing a comment at me. And since there was this weepy speech given by Commissioner Schaefer at the beginning of the meeting regarding a five-minute rule, we now have another comment that appears to be completely out of order by John Nagel and no rebuke from the Chair." And then Commissioner Schaefer says this, "Mr. Sherry, I have no idea what you're talking about. I didn't hear a comment. I apologize, I didn't hear it, but I didn't hear it." That's the exchange. Now, a week later, less than 12 hours before this meeting, John Nagel states this. Before we go into exactly what he says, let's talk about what is included in an apology. The first, and it's axiomatic, that any apology has to at least acknowledge what the conduct was. Has to at least acknowledge what the conduct was. The second two elements are an expression that what was done was wrong, and the third is, "I won't do it in the future, or I hope you accept my apology." That first thing, acknowledgement of what was done. First sentence in John Nagel's purported apology, "I would like to express my sincere apologies to Dan Sherry for my outburst at the last Commissioners' meeting." So far, so good. Next sentence, "What I said was a result of frustration and was not directed towards anyone in particular." That's laughable. It's been reported in the press that it was directed to me. It's unquestionable that it was directed to me, and anybody in this meeting who at least claimed to have heard it couldn't possibly believe that Mr. Nagel was not directing that to anyone. If you want to believe that, take one step further and believe he directed it to Santa Claus. This is not imagination land, this isn't the land of make-believe, this is the real world. And yet, a week later, reflecting on it, John Nagel still refuses to acknowledge that he actually did anything. He's apologizing apparently for a statement that wasn't even directed to me. Third sentence, "I intend to work on my self-control in the future and to make a concerted effort to increase the civil discourse among the Board of Commissioners and with township residents. I am firmly committed to assuring that the public has an ample opportunity to speak on matters before the Board." Now, that will not do. Today, after getting John Nagel's purported apology, did a quick Google search just to come up with a couple things that speak to John Nagel's conduct at meetings, as well as John Nagel's professed commitment to, let's quote it directly, "his firm commitment to assuring the public has an ample opportunity to speak on matters before the Board." We'll just go through these seven things very briefly.
Mr. Sherry, it's been five minutes, so please wrap up if you can.
August 17, 2009, John Nagel, as a member of the audience, screams obscenities at me and Chip Layfield, another Radnor resident, for questioning a farmer employed by a private company living at the publicly-owned Willow's Cottage. In response, John Nagel online states as follows, "Alas, I did lose control, I apologize to the public, but not to Dan or Chip." January 25, 2010, John Nagel, as President of the Board of Commissioners, cuts off my comments pertaining to language in the public referendum regarding open space, slams a gavel down on the dais, proclaims, "That's it, you're done," and shuts down the meeting. January 29, 2010, anonymous letter comes to me with a proposed resolution drafted by then-President John Nagel about public comments. Remember this? Specifically seeking to limit public comment to three minutes. That's John Nagel, in terms of ample opportunity for the public to make their contentions and comments, no. Moving forward to 2014, June 9, 2014, "At a Board of Commissioners meeting, I asked whether the Board of Commissioners knew, at the time Jim Higgins was graciously offering to serve on the Ethics Board..."
Mr. Sherry, we're at seven and a half minutes now. Can I ask you to please wrap up in the next 30 seconds? Thank you so much.
...that Jim Higgins was graciously offering to serve on the Ethics Board if this board knew that Jim Higgins was, at the time, the subject of an act of criminal complaint. Commissioners Booker and Fisher responded by saying they did not know that. John Nagel's response directed to me, "Punch him out." November 10, 2014, John Nagel yells an obscenity at me, leaves the dais. November 24, 2014, John Nagel yells, "Shut up," to Commissioner Booker. And then, December 8, 2014, "Somebody shoot you." This is not an example of a man who was overcome with emotion and just couldn't take it anymore and lapsed from his usual persona. This is systemic. This is John Nagel. He will not control himself. Therefore, it falls on this Board to control him.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry, your time is up now. I'm going to ask you to sit down.
And something saying specifically, that I did not direct my comments to anybody in particular is not serious, it's not sincere, and it should not be accepted as genuine by anybody on this Board. It certainly is not accepted as such from me.
Thank you for your opinion. Is there anyone else who'd like to give public comment at this point? Hello, Jim.
Hello. Jimmy Monopolis, 15 Braxton Road. I'm not going to comment on anybody's behavior tonight, I'll save that for some other time. I know there's a family here waiting to have somebody sworn in, and that should be a very nice thing. I do want to thank you for putting the issue of conditional use and what's appropriate to be discussed in public and what's appropriate to be discussed in executive session on the agenda for next time. That should be a good discussion. I really have a hard time with the idea of things being worked out and agreed upon, anything being worked out and agreed upon with regard to conditional use outside of the public. And I think, you know, as opposed to hearing that, oh, there's some precedent for that, there's plenty of precedent against it. And as a matter of fact, some of you know, I was involved in, I was a party in an issue almost 10 years ago with Villanova University, where I had concerns about their development plans around the stadium, particularly as they built the new fitness building, they were going to improve the parking lot, and at the time, they were also using it as a third-party venue for a lot of outside sports activities, including pro soccer, pro lacrosse, and so forth. Anyway, I became a party at that point, and while it was often acrimonious and disagreeable, and I think Mr. Spengler was on the Board then, so he remembers it, Mr. Curley, I believe, was on the Planning Commission at the time, so he remembers it, nonetheless, everything was discussed in public, including the conditions. The conditions were not discussed beforehand and then presented to the public, and then just voted on in public. The conditions were actually discussed and hashed out in public with the inclusion of other parties and the public, including myself. This development project was about 1/100 of the size of the project under consideration this year. There were 35 conditions attached to that resolution nine years ago. 10 of them were things that the university really wanted, about 10 of them were things that the township really wanted, and about 15 of them were things that residents wanted. We didn't particularly like the things that Villanova wanted, they didn't particularly like the things that we wanted, but everybody ended up getting what they needed, not necessarily what they wanted, because it was hashed out in public. And I would like to see that we move forward with the same democratic process as opposed to what we have seen so far this year with this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Hello, Sarah.
Sarah Pillen-Garrett-Hill. For the last 13 years, except for perhaps when I was in Haiti or had surgery, I have attended every single Commissioners' meeting. And I've been questioned why I've done that. But if you're going to be, if you're going to have a democracy, it's going to be participatory. There were times when I left shaking my head, there were times when I laughed, there were times when I smiled, there were times when I was a little downfalling, but now I am totally baffled by the behavior of the Commissioners. It is embarrassing to me, it is, it makes no sense, and I think that you all have got to take a good look at yourselves. You need to be polite and civil to each other, and you need to be polite and civil to your residents. You serve the residents, and we only come to you when we have something important to say. You don't have to respond, you can sit there, you can pretend you're listening, and at the end, you can say thank you for your opinion. But I'm sorry, your behavior is terrible, and I suspect I outrank all of you in age, and it's time for you to know it. This is a disgrace. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christina Peroni, and I would like to speak to the issue of the Charter, which is our Constitution. All of you swear to uphold the Constitution and the Charter, as it states in the Charter. Unfortunately, the item that people are referring to, which has not really been explained well, is that Mr. Rice and this Board of Commissioners negotiated behind closed doors regarding Villanova's proposal. That is completely against the Charter, because in executive session, there are very limited times when it's to be done in private. So, there was a conversation, then, about why this happened and why this transacted. So Mr. Fisher said, "I'd like to put it on the agenda to discuss by what authority Mr. Rice allowed that conversation to happen." And sadly, Mr. Rice said that, "Well, we've done it in the past." The Charter very clearly states you are not allowed to have that kind of meeting in private. It doesn't matter if we're going to get sued at some point in the future, you're not being sued right now, and therefore, it has to be in public. So I know that's an excuse that's been heard in the past. So Mr. Fisher asked to have it put on the agenda for this meeting. This Charter was changed, and I'm going to read the exact language, under 2.09-F, it says, "An individual Commissioner has the authority to add an item to the agenda for Board consideration." That particular item was added to this Charter specifically to give a voice to the minority. It was done because we had some very bad things happen in our past because the minority was not listened to. At that time, also, Mr. Booker said he'd like to hear, have that put on the agenda, and I think Mr. Curley did too, but I, I don't know. Did you also ask to have that put on the agenda? I don't know. Did you respond to that? Okay. Anyway, it's not on the agenda. So I will ask, Madam President, by what authority was it taken off the agenda, and by what specific rule was used to justify not having it on the agenda? Because the people in the audience heard it was going to be on the agenda, and came to speak to the issue. So by what authority was that excluded?
Please finish your comments, Christina.
That is my comment. I'd like to know by what legal authority was that taken off the agenda? That's my question.
I'm not going to engage in a debate right now. I made the announcement.
It's not a debate, it's a question.
It is on the agenda, next meeting.
No, but that doesn't count.
It doesn't say the next meeting in the Charter.
No, it does say.
It does not say next meeting.
"An individual Commissioner has the authority to add an item to the agenda for Board consideration." He said, "I would like it on the next agenda." You, and Mr. Rice, and Mr. Zinkowski have zero authority to not have it on the agenda. So I would ask this Board, maybe Mr. Booker, if you still feel that way, and Mr. Fisher, if you still feel that way, to have it added to this agenda. Mr. Rice is supposed to speak to a specific issue as to why he doesn't have to uphold the Charter. I'm just going to read one sentence. I'm not an attorney, but this is one sentence that everyone in the room can understand. It said, "They are bound to uphold the Constitution of the United States and this Commonwealth, comma, the Charter, and other appropriate applicable laws to carry out impartially all laws applicable to local government of the nation, Commonwealth, and Township, and thus to foster respect for all government." It's not in question. You have to follow the Charter. Mr. Rice, when he was brought here originally, when Mr. Basier was let go, and when Mr. Blake resigned or was let go, was all about openness. He would just kept saying, "Yes, the public deserves it, the public deserves it." Slowly, drip, 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 more secret, more secret, more secret. It's time for a new solicitor. Regardless of that, and you guys should put that on the agenda, to have this debate, because eventually, everybody becomes too comfortable. I would like to know by what authority this is not on the agenda, and I'd like to ask to have it put back on the agenda for today.
I will be discussing this under New Business later, later in the meeting, whether it's on the agenda or not, so.
We can bring it up in our New Business, so we'll talk about it.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. And I would ask that Mr. Rice is required to give an answer as to why, he's been our Commissioner for years, does he not know the four points of when executive session is required? He does. So even if he goofed, that's cool. He goofed, admit it, and let's move on.
No, we're going to finish this up, and we'll talk about it later in the meeting, okay? Is there anybody else who'd like to have public comment?
Good evening. Toni Bailey Rosemont. On November 24, I stood before this Board and made this statement, "Civility, common decency, respect is what I expect as a resident when I come to these Board of Commissioner meetings. It seems that we have traded that for verbal abuse by some of our members. Dissent is an important part of what our forefathers thought was an important aspect of our young democracy. Let us ask ourselves, will verbal threats and abusive language be acceptable behavior by this Board, or can I expect an immediate change? If not, it is my opinion and recommendation to call for the immediate resignation of repeat offenders." If somebody had said to me, "Someone shoot her," I would have called 911. That would have been considered a terroristic threat. That person could have gone to jail, could have been fined or whatever, I'm not familiar with that aspect of the law. Our police officers can assist me with that. At this time, I feel that this process has been traded in for something other than a democracy. I am also calling for the immediate resignation of Mr. Nagel. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to make a public comment at the beginning of this meeting? Okay, I would like to announce that immediately preceding this meeting, we had an executive session, and all of the Commissioners were President, and we discussed issues of personnel and litigation and real estate.
I'd like to move the approval of the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there anyone on this Board that would like to remove an item?
Item C, please.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to remove an item? All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda absent item C, did you say C or E?
C.
C? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes by a vote of seven to nothing, and item C...
I'll move the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting for November 10, November 18, and November 24.
I'll second it.
Don?
Yeah, the minutes of November 10, page 5, under New Business, there was some action taken regarding the Ethics Process, and the minutes say no vote was called. My recollection is that we did call a vote, and we, the motion that I presented passed. Do I understand it incorrectly? But that's my recollection.
What part of the meeting, the minutes, Don?
Page 5, under New Business. So my recollection was that we had this discussion, it was determined that the action that I asked for would be best under New Business. I made the motion, it's my recollection that the motion passed. This says, this notes that I made a motion, but doesn't...
Well, why don't we, I don't recall, and why don't we make a motion to pass, to accept the other two minutes? We'll revisit it, we'll watch the tape, and then it'll be reintroduced at our next meeting.
Sounds fair to me.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 18 and 24?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to nothing, and we will revisit the November 10 meeting minutes at our next meeting. Okay, next, we have a very exciting recognition. We are recognizing the Birth Center, which is in Bryn Mawr, on County Line Road, in the Fick Ward section of our township, for their 10,000th baby, which occurred just, I think, about a week ago. Commissioner Nagel is going to do the presentation, and if I could call up, I believe Sarah Evans from the Center is here.
Can run this though. So I have a name to try, and do you remember the name WaHl? She used to be a nurse practitioner, and she was a good nurse with you back in the nineties. Nancy WaHl. Really, Elaine's already said what the certificate says. It says, "To the Birth Center for recognition of their 10,000th baby." And I will ask you to give the folks a little detail about the 10,000th baby, you have a nice press release, and give you that, and if one of you would be so nice to tell the people about that.
Wonderful, absolutely, sure. Hi, everybody, thank you so much. Thank you. I'm Kathy Bookvar, the Executive Director of the Birth Center, and we've been in business here for 36 years in Radnor Township, and we're the oldest continually operating birth center in the United States, and the first licensed birth center in Pennsylvania. So it's a phenomenal organization with a very holistic model of care, and we were thrilled to have our 10,000th baby just last week. So, wonderful. We actually had what we described as twin babies, because there were two families that had babies so close together that we celebrated both of them. So, thank you for sharing in our excitement, and it's really, it's a huge milestone for out-of-hospital births. You may have seen in the New York Times, actually, there was just an article yesterday talking about how this is really, actually, that the midwife-led births are for healthy women, actually considered a safer option than many hospital births. So, we're thrilled, this is a growing area, we have a wonderful model of care, we welcome you to come, not just for births, actually. Though we had 10,000 births, we also see women in all stages of the continuum of life. So, thank you very much, come visit us if you'd like to get a tour, and thank you to Radnor Township for recognizing.
Yes. Well, the Birth Center is keeping us populated, if nothing else. Thank you very much for that. Next, we have an even more exciting event, we have the swearing-in of our newest Police Officer Joshua A. Alexander, and Superintendent Calerula is going to lead us in this ceremony.
Yes, Madam President, first, I'd like to thank you and the other Commissioners for authorizing this appointment. I'd also like to thank the Township Manager, Mr. Zinkowski, for not only being supportive, but he enhanced our hiring process when he got here. And it's no secret, if you've been watching the news for the last couple of weeks, how police work is in the limelight, and I can guarantee the residents of Radnor that we do literally have the toughest hiring standards out of any police department anywhere in the country. And for those that get hired in Radnor, they really have to earn it, and you truly are getting the best of the best. Nothing is foolproof, but I can guarantee you that the candidates you're getting are phenomenal. I'd also like to acknowledge the brother and sister officers that come here on their own time to recognize a fellow officer getting sworn in. As you mentioned, this is Joshua Alexander, he's a 25-year-old individual. He's a 25-year-old individual. He graduated from Delaware County Christian School in 2007. He also graduated from Messiah College in 2012 with a Bachelor of Arts degree in criminal justice. He went through the Delaware County Police Academy in 2012. He was, up until tonight, a part-time officer with the Alden Police Department. His father, Drew, is a police chaplain for Falkroft Police Department. He's here, as well as his mom, Pat, his sister, Christian, and you'll also notice one of our finer officers, Mike Fisher, is sitting in the front row. He's personal friends with the family. So at this point, with Madam President's permission, I would like to ask the audience to please rise for the presentation of the colors. The Honorable Judge Ann Osborne, Judge of the Court of Common Pleas in Delaware County, will be doing the swearing-in. I would like to ask Mr. Alexander, along with his parents, to join Judge Osborne at the front for the swearing-in ceremony.
Do we have a hand wipe?
If you could be seated, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Once again, it's an honor and a pleasure to be invited here to administer the oath of office. I apologize for my less-than-formal attire. I would like to be able to blame Chief Calarula for telling me it was dressed on Monday, but it wouldn't be true. And in hustling to be here this evening, I inadvertently left my robe behind. Fortunately, the authority is vested, not in the vestments, but in me, and so I assure you that the swearing-in will be entirely legally effective. So all of that having been said, I would ask that you place your hand on the Bible, please, and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Joshua Alexander...
I, Joshua Alexander.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I am a citizen of the United States of America...
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
...that I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States...
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States.
...and of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania...
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
...that I will faithfully perform...
That I will faithfully perform.
...all the duties of a police officer...
All the duties of a police officer.
...of Radnor Township.
Of Radnor Township.
...and obey all orders from my superior officers...
And obey all orders of my superior officers.
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Joshua. Okay, let's get a picture, and I want you to start, and then you will shake all the Commissioners.
I'd ask everyone to please rise as the colors exit the room. Please be seated, and the Alexander family are welcome to my office for some light refreshments. Thank you.
And thank you once again to Judge Osborne, who I think has already scurried out of here, but she's a wonderful asset to have in our township, and she's, always makes the effort to be here and help us welcome our new police officers. So thank you, Judge Osborne, once again.
I'd like to move the introduction of ordinance 2014-20, authorizing a handicap parking space on the north side of Deere Lane and Williams Road.
Do we have a second? Do you have, do we have some explanation of this?
Yes, Madam President. Ms. Parker, Williams Road requested a handicap parking space. The Staff Traffic Committee recommended that the ordinance be drafted for a handicap space to be established that would be on the north side of Deere Lane and Williams Road. The resident has the required paperwork, meets all the requirements for a handicap placard. She does live on the corner property.
Okay, any questions or comments from our Commissioners? Any questions or comments from our public? All those in favor of this introduction, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes seven to nothing.
That's it, under public safety.
Commissioner Curley, Community Development?
Sure, I'll move the approval of Resolution 2014-124, approving the final greenways and open space plan.
Second.
Before we have any discussion of this, I want to remind everyone, we've had this in front of us several times, this is sort of the end of the process, the formality of accepting this report and adopting it. It is not an action to, to make, to have everything in this plan be reality. These are recommendations in this plan from our committee and from our consultant, Simone Collins, and every plan that's in here will come before this board and before the public to be vetted out. Every suggestion in here will have to go through the whole process and stand on its own merits. But this is sort of the roadmap, a set of guidelines and suggestions for us to use to move forward in planning our greenways and open space. And, you know, in my opinion, it is a fantastic job. This committee did just a standout job putting this together. The product is so excellent, it gives us a very clear path towards a really pedestrian and bike-friendly community, which I know most of us want to be. So I'm thrilled to accept it and adopt it and start working towards achieving it.
Any other Commissioner comment? Any staff comment?
Madam President, just to echo your comments, the members of that committee did an excellent job, really putting it together, very comprehensive, an outstanding job.
Yeah, and I found them easy to work with. Some of the neighbors in my area had some concerns, and the group was very accommodating with their time.
Leslie Morgan, 12 Farm Road. I think it's great, you know, in a utopian society, we would all just walk and jog and ride bikes and not go to work. That being said, because we have our first tax on open space, separate from the transfer tax allocation that gets shifted over to open space, do we have Bill White, I noticed he's missing, and I would have loved him here, can we get some kind of overhead or mailers to the residents? Because what I'm concerned about is, yes, this is a great plan, over 30 years, I think that Simone Collier did a great job, they're very good at what they do. But what I'm concerned about is that we're already now having a mileage increase for an open space parcel, and now we're going to creep into this, and we're running a deficit. And I think that the residents deserve to know how that would play out. Would it be a referendum vote for another $10 million? I mean, the $10 million is about to sunset, as I understand, the $10 million that we're not using for our draws, and so could we get a little feedback here, or could we set a night where, you know, after mailing to the residents, you talk about the tax implications for the open space? That's my suggestion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes seven to nothing.
The next item is a discussion involving Greenways and Open Space Network Committee, extending that committee, so I'll turn it over to staff for that.
I would recommend that we continue that same group. I think they did a tremendous job, and now with the plan that we would ask them of their time, if they'd be willing to do so, to continue their work on this and now work on the implementation aspect of it.
So the group that we had, we had a 10-member group, it was technically a subcommittee of an ad hoc committee, so it was a subcommittee of the Open Space Committee. And the question at this point is, if this board wants them to continue on to oversee the implementation, which I'm strongly in favor of, do we want to formalize it with a resolution, or just sort of operate on the subcommittee basis going forward? And, you know, that's, that's one of the things we should discuss tonight, you know, if we want to do that. I don't believe we had a resolution when we started the subcommittee. So right now, it's a very informal subcommittee, and their meetings are not, you know, they don't have terms and whatnot, they'd had a very defined vision, but it's not written down. This group will be key in speaking to the issue that was just brought up by our public speaker. All of these projects are costly, but there's tremendous amount of grant funding out for this type of project. So having a subcommittee or a group of residents who are engaged and invested in this, looking and working and following, I mean, there's a great list in here of, you know, the low-hanging fruit in terms of, of grant money for these projects. And that's very time-consuming, to follow those grant schedules and find out, you know, what, where the pots of money are that are ripe at any given time of year. And this group would be very crucial to having that be successful, to getting grant money to get some of these projects done.
Well, wouldn't we set up a new board, that they would serve on and get terms and make it official?
We could do that. I mean, it's really up to us what we want to do.
Well, if you want to get implementation, you're going to have to have people that are appointed by the Commissioners that continually put it in front of us, whether we can afford it or not, whether we do it or not, but, you know, at least they can keep the pressure on us and the public, showing us what the possibilities are, and how much they cost, and how we could fund it.
So would you like to make a motion for staff to prepare a resolution?
Can we discuss it before we make motions? So I would think a better alternative would be for this to remain nested within Park and Rec. That one concern I would have was, I don't think it would be best that this competes against Park and Rec. We have Park and Rec to advise us on this matter. My sense is this would be best as a group within Park and Rec or other boards, if there are other boards that, that are a good fit. Regardless of where we put it, I think it's very important that we give them a very narrow scope. One of the things that I think we suffer from is we put the board out there, and then they don't know what to do, and they stay dormant for a long time. So my sense is what they would need is a very narrow scope, which would be to pick some elements of the plan and prioritize and say, "Okay, in year one, we should be pursuing this," and then come up with a plan to pursue that, that particular element.
So they're not actually currently under Parks and Rec, they're currently under open space, is that satisfactory?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not carried away with which particular, but with a subgroup of the people who have already committed to this mission...
Keeping them.
...as opposed to creating another group with the same mission.
So you'd like to see the resolution more just formalizing what's set up right now?
Yes, formal, yes, that would be my inclination, formalizing what we have now, and then adding a very narrow scope, which that scope would be to identify the, you know, if there's, there's a million things on that plan, they can identify two that could happen in the next two years.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
John, what do you think? For Park and Rec?
Well, open space works closely with Park and Rec, but I think it belongs under Park and Rec rather than open space, now that it's been, you know, delivered, because now we're talking about implementation, and many of the recommended trails are through our parks, are adjacent to our parks, so I'd rather see it as a subcommittee that would take their guidance from Park and Rec.
So logistically, what would that mean? They would report to Parks and Rec? Or, yeah, okay.
Now, would they, would they have appointments? Would they have terms?
I think they would appoint their own.
What do we do, one from each ward? What do we do?
Well, no, I mean, I think we keep the 10 that are on there now.
What?
This was really an ad hoc.
So we...
No, but what happens if somebody doesn't want to serve, and, you know, two people resign, three people move away? How do we, how do we make the changes?
Like every other committee, probably.
Just like we do with anything else. But, yeah, we should move there, Bill, but I don't know, right now, let's just get them going, with the first task being some prioritization.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't we, why don't we give it to the Park and Rec board and say, "This is a subcommittee. Why don't you give them some direction and thought, and, you know, maybe have them report back to you on a monthly basis, or, you know, every two or three..."
Pat Gillum was on this committee.
Yeah, all right.
He's on Parks and Rec.
If I can give a... If the majority of the membership now came from the Open Space Committee, do we want to have those folks be, we want to retain them on this ad hoc committee. They're not members of the Parks and Rec, so they can't serve as, as members of the subcommittee of Parks and Rec. I think we need a resolution appointing members from Parks and Rec and/or, and these, some of these existing members that want to go forward with this, and do, form it as an ad hoc committee. So to Bill's point, you form an ad hoc committee, it has a finite life, set it to two years, and then every two years, we revisit this and decide whether to continue it or not.
Is everybody on board with that, an ad hoc?
If, Madam President, if I may, I know my argument may be futile, but Parks and Rec has their plate full right now with trying to come up with capital funding of all the improvements that need to be done. This group, I think, has one focus on trails right now, they've gone through this plan. You have land development coming with Villanova, you have land development with Biomed, you have enough there where there's the potential to tie those together, as well as grants. Keep them focused on this plan, keep them right there where this needs to be, instead of putting it into a committee where, and I think at their last meeting, they talked about funding, that they've been looking for like the last five or 10 years of how they're going to fund those. I think you need to have, that's, that's a major component for them to work on, to add in trails.
Are you recommending an independent ad hoc committee?
That's, that's my recommendation, that they stay right on this task right here, focused on one item, and have a success on this plan, right here, right on task of this, and follow through, because there's opportunities to fund these without looking at general fund.
And I'll recommend that, because we're forming an ad hoc committee, membership of the Parks and Rec are welcome to join.
And they're already on, yeah.
And they're already on, and, or maybe other members want to join. And the other thing is that they have the right to go, now that we've, I believe we've approved the purchase of a grant management system, that we'd want this, this ad hoc committee to be able to help submit grant apps, maybe write the verbiage and give them that. We need to give them some focus, I think, to Don's point, we want to give them some focus. But I think it would be really helpful to have that committee help write the grants that we're going to seek to pay for the trail extensions and the trail work.
For sure. Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion along those lines?
Well, hold on, I guess my comment would be, isn't that exactly the opposite of what Don was talking about, that we make it part of our ongoing groups that are already focused on either Parks and Rec or open space? Making a separate ad hoc committee is, that's going in exactly the opposite direction of expanding it. Also, I guess my question is, are we sure that the people will want to participate? Have we talked to them?
We definitely need to ask each individual, but there was a sentiment from the group that they wanted to continue on.
And to, sort of the spirit of what I identified before can be met by having them report to Park and Rec, meaning that, what I, what I think, we want to avoid creating a board that doesn't have a mission, which some of the feedback we're getting is that some of our boards don't know their mission. And then we, we want to create boards that would compete with each other unnecessarily. So to me, we have Park and Rec and Open Space doing these kinds of issues for us, a subcommittee to them is not inappropriate.
Or an ad hoc committee that reports to them?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, so would somebody like to make that motion?
So move.
The motion is that staff puts together a resolution along these lines, and then we vote on that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, and that staff produce a resolution that continues the open space, or the, the Greenways and Open Space Network Committee, has them report to either Park and Rec or Open Space, and defines a narrow scope that involves implementation and prioritization of projects within the Greenways and Open Space Network Plan.
Second.
All right, any other comments? Any staff comments?
Just, just, Don, you left one issue open, that is, reporting to either Open Space or Park and Recreation. Why not pin it down now?
I believe I said that expressly, but, uh, and we could pick one or the other, but did you mean pick one or?
Why not pin it down now?
Okay, fair enough.
Well, yeah, but they can.
The Open Space Committee is ad hoc and doesn't meet that often.
Yeah, so they would report to the Park and Rec board then?
Parks and Rec, okay. Uh, any staff comment? Any public comment? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Pass this seven to nothing. All right, next we move on to Public Works and Engineering, Commissioner Higgins.
Yes, we have a caucus proceeding tonight involving Villanova University. Not the project that we've debated for several years now, but a new project, different project. This would be to raise a building on the campus. It's the Butler Annex Building, I believe, and to build a new structure in the exact same foot, on the, with the exact same footprint and then construct a 5,000 square foot addition to the Jake Nevin Fieldhouse adjacent to the stadium. So we have representatives from the university here. Would you identify yourself?
Before we begin, I just wanted to announce that I will not be participating in this discussion because I have a conflict with Villanova University and I will recuse myself. Thank you.
Excuse me, my name's Karen McManuels. I'm with Associated Engineering Consultants. I'm the civil engineer on the project and I'm here to represent Villanova tonight. As the commissioner mentioned, Villanova is looking to expand their athletic facilities. Currently, a number of their teams share locker rooms and share space. So they're looking to expand their facilities and create new locker rooms and additional office space and a weight room and some training, enlarge their training rooms. So to get you familiar, I'm sure everybody's familiar with the campus. This is Lancaster Avenue running through here. What we consider their athletic campus is on the eastern side of their campus, the stadium. On the corner is a Jake Nevin and the Butler Annex is a building that sits in between the stadium and Jake Nevin. The Butler Annex Building was built in the early seventies and it's called Butler Annex because it was a Butler building. It was kind of a temporary structure and right now it houses some basketball courts. So they're looking to tear that structure down so they can create a new structure housing the weight room and the locker rooms and some offices. So an enlarged plan, right here you can see that, that outline of the hatched area is the existing Butler Annex Building. And the new building is the shaded area. So we're in the same footprint as the Butler and in the back in here, we're going to infill the space here with additional building. So that would be the additional 5,000 square feet for the building footprint. It is an existing non-conformity, it is in the build, uh, set pack. So we are building the new building in the exact same footprint, so we are not increasing the non-conformity. This plan shows here, the setback line here, the building comes out to that point and the new building will not come past that point. There is, as part of the projects, we are going to do some stormwater management. The actual increase in impervious is really like 30, 3,300. And we're actually managing about 5,500 for stormwater management. We're not increasing students or faculty or staff for this building. The project is not proposing any new parking. There is adequate parking on campus. They are, uh, look in the front, but, but building is a two-story. It's, it's no higher than the existing and the back portion is a three-story building. So we are asking for three waivers. The first waiver was for the traffic impact study. The second waiver was to grant the preliminary final approval. And the third waiver is the storm, uh, for storm water management is, we have the infiltration. There's no perk in this area on campus. However, we are doing a, an underground storage bed and we are doing a rain garden to help mitigate the, uh, offset that. So we, um, in regards to the letter, the zoning, like I said, we are not increasing the non-conformity. The other was the, uh, the development for a park land or a fee in lieu of, the university would do the fee in lieu of, as opposed to dedicating for Park and Recreation. And the stormwater, we, I had mentioned, we are asking for the waiver for the infiltration.
Uh, just, I have a few questions.
Okay.
What's the total impervious for the, for the new construction? Anything related to the new construction?
The.
Total impervious square footage?
Total impervious square footage is 16,000. To be replaced with the new building.
And you mentioned that you're going to be controlling for only 5,500 square feet?
Currently, the, the area that we're developing is currently managed. Two-thirds of it is currently managed. There's, um.
Well, 16,000, what is the, what is the, already there? How many square feet are there?
Well, we had 10,000 square feet that was already there of building and then there is asphalt around the building currently, right now. That'll be replaced with a building footprint and the area back here is a gravel area, which is almost impervious. So the increase in actual impervious is only 3,300.
Right, but we, but we don't know if any of that gravel or asphalt was ever done under an approved plan. We don't, you know, that could have been added, that could have been soil and then added gravel was added. We don't know.
Um, that area is all currently managed, that stormwater runoff, the, um.
Karen, if you could turn to the drainage plan and, and explain to the commissioners which goes in which direction. A majority of the site so far is served by an existing system. And the front part of the site, which Karen can take you through, currently has no stormwater control and that's what they're adding and they're addressing that. And they've also verified to me that the existing system is sufficient to handle what it's, what's there now.
So currently, um, just wanted to go back on the, uh, on this site. There is a detention basin in the top corner and there's an underground detention basin underneath the parking lot. A portion of the building that's here now, part of this goes to this basin and the other part goes to the underground. So it's only the front part of this building right now that drains to gray and it is unretained. So that's what we're retaining with the new project. So the, the whole area is going to be managed.
Okay, well, I won't support the combination of this as a preliminary final because I have several residents on County Line Road that over the years have complained about water in their backyards. When the, um, when the new parking areas were installed, there was a stormwater system installed at that time. It was an improvement, but there's still water in the backyards along County Line Road and also, um, um, Barley Cone. I've witnessed it, I've been over there in the rain, you see the water puddling up. There are stormwater inlets that the water conveniently flows around, not into. I would imagine that on a very heavy rains, I don't know what the system's rated for, but I would imagine that if there was a nor'easter or some type of large storm event, that water's not flowing in, it's flowing out of those systems into the neighborhood. So I think it's important to give those residents a chance to come out and speak to this. And if they don't want to speak to it, fine, but, uh, you know, every time, you know, the way, the way I view this, this could be viewed as piecemeal development. And one of the requirements, requirements we have of the universities is that they come to us with 10-year plans. And what I increasingly see is that all these little projects are not part of the 10-year plans. They're just piecemeal development. And because they're treated that way, we don't look at them comprehensively from stormwater management. And, you know, maybe there's, maybe there's not an issue here, but, you know, the fact is, it's, it sounds like, um, we're adding another 3,000 square foot of, of impervious. And the system that was built for the parking lot and I guess for, um, maybe for the Dupont Pavilion, what was Dupont Pavilion, is, is now, it may not be adequate, you know? Maybe, maybe, on paper it is adequate, but if you live there, it's not adequate. So I, I, I won't support condensing this into a single approval. I would like residents to, to give them a chance to come out for preliminary and, and then for a final.
I understand in the past there were some issues with that, but I also thought it was resolved. We have met with the neighbors a number of months ago and presented this project and at that time, nobody brought up any issues.
Well, I wasn't at the meeting and that was my own issue, I had a conflict. And the point is, I appreciate that you met with the neighbors, but I think they need a public forum to come out too. And, you know, like I say, if, I'm going to make sure I publish this and, and let them know that this preliminary approval would be coming up. But I want to give them a chance because as I say, since that system was built, I was escorted through the backyards of those residents and they showed me the flooding. And from what I understand, one of the residents on the, I'll say the most western part of County Line Road, they never were satisfied. And at this point, I think they're either deceased or moved and someone else has inherited that house. So I don't know the details now, but I, going back six years ago, they were not happy. They were not satisfied that this water was being conveyed properly. So, you know, difference of opinions.
What I'm hearing you say is that you're not focusing on this proposal. You want to see corrections of problems, if they exist, on the existing stormwater situation. Because this proposal is, I'm reading from the Gannett Fleming memorandum of December 9th, Mr. Phillips, this last page. He says, "In accordance with the groundwater recharge section of the ordinance, the applicant cannot achieve the minimum 0.50 inch infiltration requirement based on the results of, of the provided infiltration, infiltration testing." That is zero, zero, 0.01 hour, inches per hour. "The applicant must request a waiver from this section of the stormwater management ordinance due to a field-measured infiltration test result of 0.0 inches per hour." And then he says, "The applicant is providing volume storage within a proposed rain garden, 204.75 cubic feet and within the stone bed beneath the storm tank, 232.4 cubic feet. This total storage volume provided, 437.15 cubic feet, will, will meet the water quality requirement volume of 435.6 cubic feet." So it sounds to me like this, this proposal will meet the requirements of our ordinance all through an alternative method. A waiver is still required, but you're, you're focusing on.
I'm focused.
Current, what you see is current problems there.
Well, there's, I understand because there is no infiltration at this site, that that water will be conveyed to other store and release systems that are in the ground at a different location. Most likely the ones that are closer to County Line Road and also at the parking lot area. So my point is, you know, engineering is telling us, yes, the system can handle the additional volume, but my neighbors are telling me, no, it can't. So, you know, we, when you have a real issue that exists, you want to look, take a little closer look. But the point is, I want the residents to be able to come out, if they want to come out, to come out and speak at the preliminary approval, not at a preliminary final because they don't have enough time to react to one meeting. You really want to give them the chance to come out to two. Again, I, if, if they were able to infiltrate all of the water at the site of the building, I wouldn't have an issue with it. But because they're actually moving this water to the other system and that system is in close proximity to the homes on County Line.
Well, we're not, we're not tying into that system.
It already, it already goes to that system now.
Yeah, and I understand that. And they're adding 3,000, 300.
No, we're not adding the 3,000 to that system.
Mr. Fisher, if I could clear that up a little bit.
Yeah, please do.
The additional portion that they're speaking of now that will go to the new storm tank and the rain garden is the front part of the building that now drains uncontrolled towards Lancaster. That's the, the additional area they're going to address and they're going to treat, or they're going to, they're going to capture there. The other part is what goes back towards the County Line Road drainage basins and that's existing.
Well, I understand it's existing, but the building is being raised and the new building is being built and this is an opportunity to relook at that because if the system was designed in the beginning to work and if it doesn't work, this is a chance to fix it. The other thing I'm concerned about is if you are concerned about water running off on the Lancaster Avenue, we know that the, the collection point for Lancaster Avenue is a pipe that runs across from Lancaster Avenue, under Pike Field and to the neighborhoods where I live, okay? And we've had issues there. That pipe is still not connected to a store, a store and release system. That pipe conveys the water from Lancaster Avenue directly to the neighborhoods behind, you know, the Old Oaks neighborhood and the Conestoga Village neighborhood. Now, again, this is piecemeal development. I appreciate it's a small project, I'm not trying to fix all the issues in the world, but I really want a chance to take a look at this and fully understand the, the impact and the opportunity that's here. I, you know, I respect that you're, you're doing things to mitigate some of these issues, but if the original design conveyed water from that site to the store and release system over near County Line and that County Line system is overwhelmed during, you know, sizable storm events, we need to take a look at that.
We're all overwhelmed during sizable storms.
Well, Bill, you know what? That's great.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's show compassion and understanding for the neighbors who live with it, you know?
Well, you don't even know where they have a problem.
Well.
Because you didn't go to the meeting and none of them have come forward. They're not here tonight, are they?
No, they probably don't even know it's on the agenda.
Well, when it's on the next agenda, you contact all and bring them all out and they'll have their hearing. They'll have their say and we'll find out.
Yeah, but I'd like to make sure that we do it in two steps.
John, it also sounds like maybe private meetings would help here. That you could arrange that with Gannett Fleming and the universities.
That's fine, but I, I like the idea of it being in a public forum and televised.
Jim, they already met privately with the residents. They didn't bring up the issue, John doesn't know, so he, you know, so I think they could come out at the preliminary final. If there's a big issue and, you know, we can add whatever we want, John. If not, we can go to another meeting.
I, I think we don't want to, you know, because, you know, the whole reason we, we made this allowance for combination of preliminary and final was because we wanted to accommodate very small projects in the township. This is a very small project that's part of a very big development, okay? This is.
So let's see, because I'm, I'm going to, for a variety of reasons, I'm going to support the, the division as you've proposed it. So I think you've made your point. Let's just see how the others feel about it.
I'm going to go that way also. I, we have enough problems with public relations and the university and, and the residents. I think we should do it this way, split it up.
So are you finished, John, because I'll go through mine? Okay, so, um, my, uh, as, as I, as I interpret what Roger told us and what Ms. Daniels, is that?
Karen McManuels.
Nick Dan said, that, uh, that the, the stormwater situation should be improved. It will be improved slightly differently than, there'll be no infiltration, but there will be retention. And certainly there will be peak rate control that we currently don't have.
Correct. The, the stormwater is definitely going to be improved. The areas that, the back areas, there's no increase going to the existing facilities. No increase in flow, in fact, they're, they're slightly less than what currently goes there now. And the front portion that is currently unretained is going to be managed. And so we're not changing any of the watershed and anywhere anything flows currently.
Okay, and then regarding the waivers, traditionally we have waived the transportation impact for projects like this, that makes sense. Regarding the preliminary final, I would characterize this as not one that we would prelim, we would grant that waiver, that we would see this project through the two different phases. And then regarding the infiltration, I would say that that is one where we have, we have granted that waiver when the situations are as you've described and when there is alternative stormwater management. So I would anticipate supporting the, or I'm at this point supportive of the waiver for the traffic impact study and for the infiltration, but not supportive of the waiver to consolidate into a single preliminary final group.
Okay.
Is there an elevation anywhere? Do we see a street elevation rendering of the?
Do we see a street elevation rendering of the proposed? What's the difference, what's the building going to look like?
We do have elevations of the building. The architect is here tonight. Can I also mention, I mean, we have met with the neighbors. We were in front of planning board for a sketch plan submission in September, and we were in front of planning two weeks ago.
Good evening. I'm Darren Jellison from Blackney Hayes Architects. You can see that, okay?
Can we zoom?
I have it before, if you want to see it.
Yes, please.
It's not much to look at. You can see here is the existing Butler Annex Building. I have other views that show it in a little more detail, but this is the street view.
Just to mention, it's important that the trees and the shrubs are not going to be removed. So, even though the new elevation shows the building, the trees and shrubs aren't going to be removed.
What else do you have? Just those two? What's the other one?
I do have other views from, here's the view of the project from the field. To the left, the arched windows of the low structure are what are replacing the Butler Annex Building. So, this is the wall facing the field. And here's an aerial view of what the project looks like in totality. A curved wall. This is the Butler Annex replacement, and it's three stories behind.
So, there's an existing curved wall there, and you're?
No.
This is the same footprint, I thought we said.
This is what it looks like.
Okay.
Originally.
No, it's not the same footprint. It's a 3,300 square foot increase in building footprint.
I thought I heard, didn't you say, well, this is the same footprint? I thought we said that.
Butler Annex is.
Butler, sorry, you can't speak for the audience. Have to go to the mic to speak. People are home or listening.
The front part of the building is within the Butler Annex Building footprint. There's an addition in the back.
Okay, and that's the additional paved impervious area that you're, or that is impervious, right now is impervious, right now, is what you're saying.
Part of what's in the back here, there's a.
Can you move it back, move it back in the center?
Behind the building here, there's a one-story piece of building that's going to be demolished, and there's a building there for Verizon Services. Those two buildings are going to be demolished. So, part of that, the new structure is going to be there, so that's building. So, there's an area in here that's gravelled, area around here that's going to be part of the new building, and that's the building increase.
And that road that's shown right there, that's Eithon Avenue at the top?
Yes, that's Eithon.
How much is this going to cost?
We don't have a final number on the project right now.
How many total square feet is it?
It's, there's a partly renovation. I think the total square footage for the new part is about 40, and then there's about 10,000 square feet being renovated.
So, a couple million bucks, anyway?
I'm sure it's a couple million.
How many, how many, so was it 10 million? $500? What, how many, per foot?
Anyway, it's 50,000 square feet of.
50,000 square feet.
New usable space, or I don't want to say new usable, of complete usable space, as opposed to what is existing now is.
The Butler Annex Building is about 10,000 square feet right now.
10,000. So, it's a fivefold increase in usable space, as far as structures, buildings go?
50,000 versus 10,000?
Not fivefold, because part of the renovation is inside.
Well, you had telecom equipment in a building. You don't have a headcount there. That's equipment. And now, it's being turned into a facility for use by students and athletes, so there'll be more use of that space. This is a little more complicated than it appears to be, and even though the claim is that it won't, won't change, have an impact on traffic and so what, it will have an impact on students crossing the street, because you have more students coming to the facility that doesn't exist now.
It's actually a facility just for the athletes, so the.
So, none of them will live on the other side of the pipe, then?
Well, if they're there now, though, nothing will change in regards to that, so, just because it's a new facility doesn't mean there's more.
Will there be offices in this as well?
Yes, new coaches' office, there's a training room, there's an open room for presentations, locker rooms.
But there will be, there's no, absolutely no increase in traffic associated with those? Where are the coaches' offices now?
The coaches' offices now are in the stadium, the locker rooms are in the stadium. So, it's all in the same area, it's part of campus.
So, they'll move over there, and what will the old area be used for at that point?
I don't know what that is.
You don't know?
So, I just don't want to get carried away here, but it seems to me you're going from, I think you said, 10,000 square feet of building that's being used by athletes to a 50,000 square foot building, and yet, the only stormwater we're doing is a 204 cubic foot, the only new stormwater we're doing is a 204 cubic foot.
Rain garden.
Rain garden. Wow, I wish I could do this.
No, we're doing a rain garden and an underground detention basin.
Accurate is 16,000 square feet, 10's already there, increase is 6. What you put on top doesn't affect the stormwater, John.
Right, we're not increasing the footprint.
Now, and Bill, I can assure you that if there's asphalt behind that building, that that was not part of some plan. That may have just been done, okay? This is the way development happens. You know, you get tired of looking at the dirt and weeds, and you pave over it. So, the reality is, show me a plan where all that impervious was already on the books and approved by the Board of Commissioners or by some zoning board, and great. I don't believe that's the case. I believe this is a fivefold, a fivefold increase of structure, and they're only requesting to do a 204 cubic foot rain garden. Now, I understand, the water's being conveyed to an existing system, but what I've already stated is that that existing system, under the right conditions, is overwhelmed, and the residents are getting water in their yards. So, I would argue that we really want to take a good look at the stormwater on this, even though they're not required. The fact is that that system was not designed to do this building. That system was designed to take care of the large parking lot and all the other impervious that's in the back.
But I heard, and tell me if I heard it incorrectly, but I heard that you were building a new facility in the front that would control, be great. Is that correct? So, there's more than just a rain garden?
It is more than just a rain garden. This is the front part of the building here, which is the total square footage that'll be managed is 5,500. There's an underground detention basin right here in the front here, which has a total volume of 743 cubic feet, and then there's a rain garden on the corner here that will take flow from this area here and manage that, which bypasses the system here. That's why we've added that right here. So, any of this back here that goes into this back here, there's a portion back here will still go back there. As I said, we're not increasing any impervious square footage to those existing facilities.
Well, anyway, it is, I think it is large enough that it does call for a preliminary and a final review.
Yeah, I think we're almost unanimous on that. So, should we proceed, then? Is there anything more? We don't vote tonight on anything, but I agree with Commissioner Fisher on that, that we'll have you come back with preliminary evaluation and then come back for a final.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, the next item is, oh, I'm sorry. Come forward, please.
A quick question. When a development gets a zoning variance for a nonconformity, it was my understanding that you don't just get to keep that. If you're changing your nonconformity, you have to go through zoning again and get another variance. This is a completely different structure. So, it's not like they're, you know, changing the curtains. They're going and adding another structure, and as Mr. Fisher said, you know, that was maybe zoned, impervious or not. But I don't believe nonconformities have a life that go with the building.
Well, I, there are, John, do you want to comment? I mean, normally, you have to leave the wall up, or, you know, you have to, to vest your right, you have to leave part of the structure, but they're raising the entire structure.
Right.
So, it is arguable that they lose the right, in my opinion.
Right, and they have to go through zoning and redo this.
Is that right?
Yeah, I think what they're proposing to do, and it's raised in some of the reviews, and I don't know whether the zoning officers looked at this plan yet, because it's early on, but they're saying, "We have an encroachment into a setback of 90-some feet, and the requirement is more than that, and they're intending to take the building down and keep that encroachment with the new building." So, that's a zoning issue. Zoning officer is going to have to look at that as part of the review process. I don't know whether, Roger, has there been any zoning issue raised at the, by the zoning officer at this point? No, there hasn't. It's been looked at as the continuation of a nonconforming use.
Of an, not a nonconforming use, but a nonconforming yard situation, right?
That's correct, and they're not, they're not encroaching anymore on that. They're just continuing that. Yeah. It's not a nonconforming use. It's.
It's a nonconforming structure.
But to that point, if any, if any resident had a nonconforming building, and they raised the building, they lose their vested right.
You'd lose it.
It's gone. I have property owners on Garrett Avenue that tore the house down, and that lot has sat empty for 10 years now, because they lost their vested right to rebuild what was there.
Right.
Okay, so, this is a good question, and why hasn't this gone to the zoning hearing board?
Send it right through to zoning. I mean, let the judicial process work.
This is a caucus, so, you know, we're going to, the staff is going to have to look at this issue, get the board's input. When this comes back, if it comes back, then that issue will be discussed, or the zoning officer is going to have to make some kind of determination that the existing encroachment in the yard, it's not a nonconforming use, in the yard, has to be corrected, because they're putting a new building up. It's an issue that's come up with some residential housing.
Yeah, it came up with 219 Poplar in 2012, and.
Right.
That builder took down most of the building and left just the foundation.
Foundation stayed in, and that was permitted. And I think this has been in front of the zoning hearing board on a couple of occasions. But this board really can't do anything on that issue tonight. It's got to go through whatever we need to brief Bill Miller on, and if they've got to go to the zoning hearing board and make their argument, they'll have to do that.
I just want to say, I really appreciate Commissioner Higgins, Fisher, and Curly Booker, who just asked to have this separated into two meetings, and not, Commissioner Booker, too, to have this separated out and not just jam through. So, I appreciate your recognition that this is a big issue. Thank you.
Sarah Pilling?
Sarah Pilling, Garrett Avenue. I did attend that meeting that Villanova had. They had it in the gym. It was during the summer. And my recollection is, the emphasis was how the rounding of the building, which would complete the rounding of the stadium area, the new signage, so there wouldn't be boards, it would all be electronic, and the nice windows. My memory is of the stormwater is that it was glossed over, and certainly, issues were not raised. It was just, won't this, and I'm not denigrating Villanova, but there was no emphasis on stormwater management or improvement. It was more about the shape of the building and what it was replacing. And my memory is that there'll be nutritional dining rooms in there, and that the offices and the locker rooms under the stadium will be used for other teams who don't have locker rooms at the moment. So, that was what was emphasized to it. And it was also during the summer, which is a hard time to get people, they are entitled to go away on vacation. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a statement? Okay, no? Then we are, I think that concludes it. There's no vote on this, formal or informal, but we will expect the applicant to come back with a preliminary plan for review. Okay. The next item is also under Public Works, and that is update of about four projects that have been pending for some time within the first ward and the third ward. So, I'd like to ask Mr. Zankowski and Mr. Norrisini to give us a summary.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. So, the first project we spoke of was the North Wayne Field Basin, and I've spoken to the design engineer, Ryan Cummins, and the preliminary design will be sent to the township for our review by January 16th, 2015. The project would be put out to bid June 15th and substantially complete by December 31, 2015, with any punch list work to take place in the spring. And.
Did you say September or December?
December of 2015.
Year from, year from now.
That's correct.
But, does that mean we'll have a lot of site work going on in the winter months? Or will it be mostly complete in the summer and the fall?
The, if the contract is, according to the tentative schedule they provided, if the contract is awarded in August 1, it takes about a month to get all the bonds and material submittals approved. Construction would start September 1. So, you'd have the better months of September and October for construction, not that construction cannot take place in the winter months, but that's why he has the caveat of the remainder of the project being done in the spring. So, substantially complete usually means 95%.
And also, you might touch on this, so forgive me if I'm premature on this, but the school board has approved this, and they agree with us doing this. It's a school board property, or school district property, correct?
That's correct. We have a lease agreement for that property.
So, the township leases that, and then, under the lease, the township is permitted to do these improvements?
That's still ongoing at this point for the actual method, how this will take place.
So, is that something that also could delay the award of the contract, or is that not an element?
My hope is that any issues would be worked out long before we put this out to bid, because the bid date, again, based on Ryan's schedule, June 15th, six months from now, I would hope that any issues are worked out by that point in time. So, he would keep moving on with the design while any other issues are being taken care of.
I believe it is going to be, the North Wayne Field issue is going to be in front of the Facilities Committee of the School Board on their next meeting. And they're going to talk about some of the options, different options, about how to work this relationship. And then, I guess they'll make a recommendation to us, or suggest, or, you know, give us their opinion of how they'd like to work it.
Richard, you have anything else you want to?
My question was, I guess, my question remains, at this point, we don't have a definitive agreement with the town, with the board, with the Board of School Directors, but expect to conclude something in time to proceed with the construction schedule as you've laid it out there.
That's correct.
All right, Steve, is that all you're going to say on this? Because I have a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm very glad to hear we finally have a date for a preliminary design of January 15th. It's been a little distressing that we've waited this long for Chagrin Valley to produce that. They performed very, very well for us in 2012 and 2013, but this year, I have to say that I've been disappointed with their just being so slow, and also, many cases, not even responding when you've asked them for commitments and statements and so forth. But at least now, we have a commitment for a preliminary design of July, of January 15th, and let's hope from here on, things move faster.
The second item is basically what we call South Wayne, and this also, this involves several areas. Really, it's from Lancaster Avenue to Windermere. So, we have the unfinished portion of School Lane Storm Sower, and we have the flooding that occurs in front of the firehouse and down by Runnymede and Windermere, and that's a feasibility study that Chagrin Valley Engineers is working on, and they are to have a preliminary report to the township by early February of 2015.
And when did you give them that assignment?
That was earlier this year. Make sure, I'd have to go back to the purchase order to get you an actual date.
Say, the first quarter of 14?
I believe so.
What will that, what is the feasibility study? What is a feasibility study? That, will that give, like, addressing what the problem is and how to fix it?
Addressing what the problem is and giving us avenues to fix it, because originally it was just the flooding, but when I sat down with the design engineer, I said, there's several pieces to this. We have unfinished portion of Storm sewer that was gonna go up from School Lane to West Wayne Avenue and take care of some of that stormwater, which contributed to the flooding in front of the firehouse, but we also get flooding that goes up Runnymede and back towards Windermere. So I didn't want to just address School Lane and still have all these issues. So they're going to look at that and provide us with some means and methods to address them, to address that area.
Bob, I would like to ask whether we might consider removing this project from Chagrin Valley and transferring it locally here, perhaps to Gannett Fleming.
The board can do whatever they would like. I think the direction we need from the board is, what do you want to do? And how are you going to fund this?
Well, two questions. I think what we want to do is, we've had this problem for, before I got on the board, that we have a system under the middle school field that was never connected. We have flooding on, in front of the firehouse, which is a real risk and danger during some of the storms, during storms of the type we've had in recent years. So we want to fix all that.
I agree, but also there's a cost of how we're going to pay for that.
Well, you're jumping.
And there's a significant cost to go ahead and design that. And I think there's gotta be a consensus of the board to say, how are we going to pay for that? Because when you start to get into the design costs and all of that, you're gonna start spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to be able to go ahead and do all that, so...
I was just assuming this was a stormwater project. Is it, why would this not fall under our stormwater program?
Well, we have a stormwater board, so, I mean, again, it's...
I mean, did this recommendation come from the stormwater board?
This predated their existence.
Oh.
This proposal predated that.
But the question isn't, shouldn't be tied down to how we're gonna pay for it. The question should be, what's the most expeditious way of getting this project off the ground? And I just question whether it's, whether we should have, continue to have it with a company in Ohio that's not been responsive.
Jim, you can, here's the issue. You can have a firm here in Pennsylvania do it. The question comes back to, the board needs to give clear direction what you want. So the issue is, is you need to specifically say, we want this project done, then you need to go ahead and allocate the money to get it done, and specifically be very clear with it. To me, you can't say, well, we want to do this, and then all of a sudden, well, how are we gonna pay for these things?
Now, we're, Bob, we're clear.
Oh, Bill, you haven't been.
We're clear, we just want to know what the problem is.
I think...
And then how much it's gonna cost. That's what the feasibility study is, is how do we solve this problem? Then we'll have to deal with, how can we afford it? How are we gonna do it? But all we want to know now is, and the feasibility, doing the feasibility study is, how do we hook in School Lane? How does it affect West Wayne Avenue, the firehouse, and Runnymede Avenue? We're not spending any money to solve the problem. We're spending money right now just to find out how much is it gonna cost and how can we do this? Then we can make the decisions as a board about how we're gonna fund it, not fund it or do it or not do it, but we first have to find out, you know? That's what the study is.
So if I'm not mistaken, I think we talked about that in 2011. We can go back and revisit that, because I believe in Chagrin Valley's report that goes back, it was discussed in there. So we can go back and revisit that. We can authorize Gannett Fleming to begin immediately if the board so authorizes so, or another firm.
What are they doing on School Lane and Runnymede that we're gonna get a report?
Have they begun the project yet?
They have, and what I was gonna suggest is, I could go back and pull the PO and the billings and see what percentage we have paid them, where they stand. Now, they're telling us they could do it. They will have a preliminary report to us in roughly two months. So by the next meeting, I could let you know where they stand. We can talk to Gannett Fleming and see if they can do something within that timeline also. I would get the information from...
Steve, my suggestion would be is we cease all with Chagrin Valley. We kick this Gannett Fleming, begin the work immediately, but the board has to be specific. If you're looking for, what is it that you want them to do specifically? And that is a consensus of the board. The board gives direction, then we will begin that immediately.
I'll tell you, my opinion is, I was under the impression that part of what the advisory group would do would be advise us on the use of funds to do feasibility studies like this. So my sense is that we need that group to tell us if these are high priorities, and if they are, then we act on it using stormwater funds. No offense to groups from Ohio, but I don't see any reason why we have an engineer from Ohio. So my sense is we have, that Gannett Fleming should be the engineer that does this work for us.
Don, I agree with you 100%. I brought them in here in 2010 because I'd worked with them.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
Exactly, but I agree with you.
And no issue with their past performance, it's just that there's an inherently local aspect to stormwater management that should be done by... So to me, the next step for us is the stormwater advisory group telling us that these are the priorities, and a feasibility study is part of it. You know, if it is, it might not be the highest priority.
Let me ask two questions following up on that. One, they're working on a priority list.
Right.
Is this project on that priority list?
There are about 11 projects. This is one of them.
Okay.
And they will be going back to this at their January or February meeting.
Okay. Two, not to complicate this matter, but one of the things we are waiting to hear from them, we put out an RFP for a firm, an engineering firm, consulting firm, to help us with these projects. That's going to put another engineer into this mix, and wouldn't that be the likely candidate for this work?
No, actually, Commissioner, the way it was structured, that firm was more or less of a facilitator, not doing the actual design work. They were there to work with the Stormwater Management Advisory Committee. I can tell you that at the last Stormwater Management Advisory Committee, I brought to them a project for a culvert and bridge evaluation of 36 sites in our township. And the request was, do we go for RFP? Where can we use our existing township engineer from Gannett Fleming? And they were wholeheartedly on board with using Gannett Fleming, and I concurd. I think that's the way to go. We have a known commodity that works for us, and not to confuse matters, but this actually goes to my third item, which is the Wayne Train Station Lot. We received $100,000 from SEPTA for the construction of some type of stormwater management system on the north side of the Wayne Train Station, across from John's Village Market, if you will. This project was pulled from Chagrin, and my request is to let Gannett Fleming do this design. I have received, this all happened relatively quickly, so I don't have a resolution, but I've received a not-to-exceed-cost proposal from Gannett of $19,280 to do this design. So I would request we let Gannett Fleming move forward on this design, and they can have a preliminary design to the township in about two months. And my thought would be, if you wish to terminate anywhere work on South Wayne, I would need to notify Chagrin of that, and then if you wish to wait until the project list is prioritized, we can move forward with the scope of work.
So how do we, hang on, we were in a contract with them? We're in a contract with Chagrin Valley?
Correct. There was a, they provided us with a cost proposal.
And we've accepted the terms of the contract, we've entered into a contract, and now we wish to terminate this contract on what grounds? And are they going to be willing to terminate at this point?
Well, if I know, if I know our purchase order terms, we have the right to terminate for our convenience upon 30 days' notice.
It usually goes both ways. It's usually 60 days with both. I'd have to look into that.
I don't think there's a problem there.
Well, hang on, though. If it's 60 days...
We can give notice. We can give 60 days' notice. I believe there'll be no problem giving notice for that.
Well, 60 days' notice, though, takes us to February, which is when the report was due.
What would happen is they would cease any work on it. We would pay them for any work done and ask for any materials, any deliverables they have, if that's the way the board wishes to proceed.
I would recommend that administration have a conversation with them and find out what the holdup is, and if they're not able to move on it because of internal issues, that, get them to agree verbally to cancel this agreement, and then get them to sign, you know, a waiver and return, you know, if there's any, well, there's no, they don't have to return any money, but the point is, we need them to release us on that contract.
Are you still, you're talking about the South Wayne project?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever contract they're currently engaged on that we've entered into.
South Wayne.
Wayne, thank you.
John, I think you're making more out of this than needs to be made out of it. I hear from the staff that they're, well, I'm not happy with Chagrin Valley's performance, and I think the staff, our director of public works is not happy, but I won't put words in his mouth. Secondly, we don't need to go back to Chagrin and get their opinion on what's going on internally.
Jim Johnson.
We should act, and thirdly, we have, if I know our terms and conditions correct, I think I do, we have the right to terminate for convenience upon 30 or 60 days' notice, and I think we should do that.
Jim, that's all fine. What John is saying is, is that if they're spending $25,000 to design this, and they've already spent 18, and it only takes six to complete it, maybe we should complete it with them instead of going out and starting all over again, spend another 15 or 20,000, that's all we got. If they haven't done any work and we haven't spent any money, fine.
Well, in answer to that... I just want to clarify, though. This is, and Jim, I appreciate what you're saying, but I do contracts. If you give me a 30 termination, I have the right to continue to work for 30 days and bill you for that time. So, you know, that, I think you do, yeah. I think you have to, they have work that's underway. They have work that is underway, and they're gonna want to get paid for it.
That's a detail. What I heard Steve say, again, we're talking about...
No, that, we'll find out, to find out for us.
Whether somebody get, you cannot get a termination notice and then continue to work for 30 days. You stop work when you get the notice. That's, okay.
Well, let the staff handle it.
As far as us, you sound like we might be wasting money because they've already gone way into the project. No. What I heard Steve say is that they're only doing a feasibility study, this is on South Wayne now.
Right. They've done survey, there's been survey work done out there. There hasn't been any borings or anything.
And we can get those documents. There's not a real design that's been done.
No.
And thirdly, they're asking for another two months before they'll give us a feasibility study. That's not production, sorry. We can get better than that.
Well, that's the case, fine, Jim. We just don't know.
Okay, so I think what you were hearing here is that we'd like to inquire whether we can switch at this point, whether it's in our benefit to switch at this point, and if there's some negative repercussions from switching, we should know about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And again, on the Wayne Train Station Lot, the service was terminated with Chagrin Valley on that, and there was no repercussions or any issues with that. And again, this all happened rather quickly. I do have a cost proposal from Gannett Fleming. I do not have a resolution. It just came past that due date. So I guess my next request would be, at the next meeting, I'll prepare a resolution and memo to authorize Gannett Fleming to move forward on this other project.
Great.
On South Wayne, we don't have, we aren't giving any firm direction here to discontinue work with Chagrin. Is that right?
We're asking them to look into it, whether we can discontinue without penalizing ourselves.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we want to give administration the latitude to terminate, and so that, what I'm hearing is the board is okay if you terminate, as long as we can do and exit without penalty.
Okay, is there a number four? Is there an issue number four?
I don't know. Commissioner Higgins, is there an additional one you had? I'm sorry.
Well, just the overall motion, the overall process of the stormwater advisory...
The overall situation as respects the Stormwater Advisory Committee, are we getting, do they have a sufficiently well-defined agenda? Are they moving? Are you helping them?
I think yes on all items. So I really believe the Stormwater Management Advisory Committee has hit their stride. They are working on multiple issues at this point, so they have the stormwater management, I called it a stormwater project administrator, so that's the RFP cost proposal they're working on. They are working on prioritizing a project list and still refining the credit memo, credit possibilities. So what they've done is, we're calling in, they requested that we bring in one of the consultants for a scope refinement meeting, and that's gonna happen in January. February, January and February will be further work with the project priority list. We already have several projects underway. The Shimonie Road Bridge was completed the day before Thanksgiving. The Mile Bridge Road Culvert is in design. The Willow's Bridge is, although not out of that fund, but the Willow's Bridge is getting ready to go out to bid. And again, so I brought to them a project, looking for their approval to come to this board with, for the culvert evaluation in the township. They are fine with that, and their recommendation, which I'll get for you in writing, is that we move forward with our township engineer, Gannett Fleming, which I concur with. I think that's a good move. And we also have the televising and cleaning and mapping bid, which will be going out shortly. So we have a lot of projects that have been approved and are moving forward. The Mayland Road Culvert feasibility study being done by Gannett will be due soon. So I think the board is moving forward on a lot of issues, so they're hitting on several cylinders, and it's all at once.
Steve, do you think they would benefit from having a more narrow scope? My sense is the overriding priority for us is the list of projects, and that it trumps all those other things. Some of those things you identified, I don't know that the group needs to give you input on. So to facilitate what you want, Jim, I think that we should, I mean, my sense has always been that that scope has been too broad for them. It should be narrowed at this point to simply the prioritization of projects. And that might facilitate what you want done, because it hasn't happened in a timely manner.
I agree. I'd just like to see them give us a third project somewhere else in the township, other than the first ward, perhaps, that my fellow commissioners can get their hands around, and it's gotta be a meaningful project that will help public safety.
I will convey to the Stormwater Management Advisory Committee the board's wish that the next meeting be dealt, dealing with the priority list. We can have a special meeting or push the cost proposal refinement, the fee refinement, to another month if we have to. So I will send that email out as soon as possible.
So is that what the board wants, though? Does the board want that group to narrow its focus and concentrate entirely on a list of projects?
I agree with that, Don. I think that that should be the first order of business is to, I mean, when you think about it, it's been some time that they've been in place. We ought to have the list of projects, and let's have, if we're gonna agree on anything, let's agree or disagree with their priority, but let's get the projects listed.
And, I mean, it should certainly not be characterized as they're not doing enough. It should be characterized as, we think we gave them too much to do.
Right. You've given them focus on a specific topic at this point.
And my sense is, and others, if you feel differently, tell me, but my sense is no special meetings. That's not the point of this. The point is not to make them meet more. The point is to take the amount of time that they're using now and narrow it into the most important priority for us.
They actually discussed having a special meeting, knowing that these two topics were up. The fact of the stormwater project administrator and the project list. So they're fully aware of the importance of both.
Bob, do you have an opinion on that?
And frankly, when, if we ask them to prioritize their time and come up with, focus solely on this priority list, simultaneously we're going down the project administrator road, that project administrator should take a little bit of the burden of what they're being overwhelmed with.
Yes.
I think a lot really goes back to the resolution that created them. And if you take a good look at that resolution, it is very detailed, and from hearing what the board's saying now, perhaps more detailed than what is now currently intended. So maybe we should revisit that, because if you go by the letter of the law, there are many tasks that they are supposed to do, when I think I'm hearing that they should be on a more general level, prioritizing projects and giving staff and our engineering firm a way to proceed, but not too detailed. As in, we approve, we approve Project X to go to the Board of Commissioners, and we would like to see it be designed in this fashion. But they have, if you look at the list on the resolution, there's quite a few things we've charged them with doing.
Well, I think that's a good suggestion. I mean, I'm not really willing to take things off until I see what I'm taking off, but I think that's a good suggestion for us to revisit that resolution and see, after a year of operation, maybe we can and should pick a fewer amount of... a year of operation, maybe we can and should pick the few, a fewer amount of things we really need them to focus on.
So, do we want staff to rewrite the resolution and bring it to us with that narrow focus of assigning the group to, to focus on the priority list?
Well, I would suggest they take, with, pull it, redline it the way they would like to see it, and then we'll discuss it.
I wouldn't change the resolution. What I would do is, we can give a directive to that committee.
Yeah, yeah.
We can vote in a public meeting under, and it's just a, it's just a motion even. We don't even need a resolution.
I, I think that there's a lot of Stormwater professionals, people who we've selected to be on that, they can do everything that's in the resolution. Just the first thing, let's get that project list, and then start working on, on the other things, which are taking a lot more time. They spend a lot of time on mapping of impervious surface, and decided not to, and, and credits, really, I think just, we want them just focused, get the list, and then let's go to those other things.
We were a very qualified group. They're very dedicated, hardworking, and intelligent.
Steve, Steve, I have a question, though. This issue in front of the Fire Department has been brought up ever since we did the project, and before I came on the board, 2006. In fact, members of the Radnor Firehouse came down to the Stormwater Education Event in Garrett Hill last week. The Riverkeeper presented a, and had a guest speaker come down, because they, they are deeply burdened by this water issue. Apparently, it's affecting response time during rain events. I appreciate having a Stormwater Committee, but I think administratively, public safety has to come first. And if that is, you know, that's a public safety issue. It's existed. I don't know if we need to prioritize that project. I think that project should have been done already. That should have been done regardless of whether we had a stormwater ordinance, regardless of whether we had a stormwater fee. That project needs to be addressed, that, that issue needs to be addressed administratively. I don't, I don't want to slow it down.
Right. But no one, no one, for the time that we've been on the board, no one has presented us any piece of engineering that says that that project will be effective. So, before we can-
Oh, I agree that it needs to be engineered, yeah.
No, not engineered. We have to do some kind of analysis to determine whether it's worth engineering.
That's correct.
By feasibility to make sure.
Yeah. So, we, it's, okay, maybe I, I'm, I think it's way premature to say we proceed with that project on a administrative level. We don't know that that project will be effective or not be effective. That's what we have to determine.
Didn't we just 10 minutes ago decide that we were going to go ahead with the feasibility study and try and take it from Chagrin?
But John just said to circumvent that, though.
Well, no, I'm asking, are we asking the, maybe I'm confused now. Are we asking the Stormwater Committee to prioritize the feasibility studies or just the projects?
No, so-
That study's already going ahead.
Correct.
It is on the priority list.
Fair.
But it's already in motion.
I apologize.
Okay. Steve, thank you so much for the update on all of those projects. It's very helpful for us to hear what's going on and keep abreast of these issues. All right. Personnel and Administration, Commissioner Fisher, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Finance and Audit, Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Parks and Recreation, Commissioner Nagel?
The sand delivery was this weekend. Huge success. I reminded the people in my ward not to get excited about fire trucks going up and down the streets. Forgot to tell my wife. So, that was a glaring error, and she came running in the house, "What's going on?" But it was a big success, second year, and I'm sure it's a program that'll continue. That's all for Parks and Rec.
Library, Commissioner Booker?
The next meeting will be December 18th for the Board of Trustees.
And Public Health, Commissioner Nagel?
There was a presentation at the Board of Health tonight by the President of Bryn Mawr Hospital, talking about the fact that they're doing away with their cardiothoracic unit, and we had heard about this maybe a year or two ago. So, they presented what their plan was, and attempted to assure the board that this would not affect any emergency situations. They still will have full capabilities at Bryn Mawr Hospital for emergencies. Second thing, there was a health alert put out by Pennsylvania Department of Health, outbreak of, let's see if I can say this right, chigella, chigellolysis, which is the chigella infection, linked to daycare facilities in southeastern Pennsylvania. It's characterized by diarrhea, which is often bloody, fever, nausea, vomiting, abdominal cramps. It's generally self-limiting, lasting from four to seven days. Individuals may remain infectious up to four weeks. So, if you start to have any of these things, caution you to get to your doctor as soon as possible. That's all for Board of Health.
Okay. Old business. I want to come back to how we started our meeting with the announcement that there will not be a special meeting on 12/22, as we had scheduled. We are canceling that meeting, and we will not be approving, the, the whole sole point, the sole purpose of that meeting was to adopt the introduct, the ordinance that we had introduced in adding on .15 millage for the arthrosin bonds. And I, tonight we have here Mike Wolf from Benning and Scattergood, and I'm going to ask him to stand up and explain why we are not introducing this millage at this point. The bottom line is, we will still be taking out the bond, we will still be closing on the property next week, but the bond financing has been tweaked so that the first-year payment will not require a millage increase. We will be deciding what the millage increase will be at the end of next year, 2015, and it will start 2016. So, for this year, 2015, there will be no tax increase at all. There's, there was no tax increase on our general operations budget, and there will be no arthrosin tax increase this year. Hello, Michael.
Good evening. Michael Wolf from the firm of Benning and Scattergood. I wondered if anyone here tonight is in the mood for good news.
Shoot.
I like to deliver good news, and first, Bill White called me today at 12:30 and said I had to fill his shoes, so that's not so good. I'll do the best I can. But at 5 o'clock, John Rice participated in a conference call with the finance team, and, and we decided jointly that, with the staff, that we can close on arthrosin this calendar year, specifically a week from tomorrow.
December 23rd.
Right. And that we can close on the bonds, sell the bonds tomorrow morning, beginning at 10 o'clock, and close on Monday, the 22nd. So, it's been on again, off again, on again. It's on, full bore, and we're ready to go at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. Couple things have happened. One, we were sort of running out of time, as you know, to put the tax increase in place. Fortunately, we got a couple of helps. Interest rates have come down nicely this whole year, and especially in the last two weeks. I don't know if you'll be able to zoom in on this table and, and see the graph I amended here by hand, but we were, we were anticipating tomorrow's rates to be lower than anybody has seen. Let's see, what do I do? Do I do like this? All right. So, two weeks ago, Bill White did this graph for you when you were here. Tonight, we're down here, below, even below the, the line. So, we're expecting tomorrow that debt service will be substantially lower than any study Bill White has had to work with this year. And, we were also able to, because we haven't sold the bonds yet, manipulate the repayment, especially in year one, to give the township a little bit of a break on the repayment in year one, which is something that had been talked about a couple of years ago, and it just seemed like a good idea to put that in place. In spite of that manipulation, we still calculate that the debt service overall will be much lower, and will be lower in every year, than if we had paid a full on payment of principal and interest in year one. So, the good news is, we're ready to go, and we don't need the tax increase. I watched the meeting of the commissioners last time, in which you're going to review it each time, when, and put it as needed, and this year, it's not needed, which is a good thing, because we're running out of time with the county and other people like that.
Who knows? Maybe every year it will be not, not needed, and we'll never do it.
We'll see. But we don't need it, we don't need it in 2015. There's enough anticipated to be available in the fund, and we've also lowered debt service a little bit that first year, as is often the case.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Does anyone have any questions of Michael?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So, Michael, exactly what was it that we did for the first year to manipulate the, the debt service such that we came in and would not require a tax increase?
We lowered the debt service in the first year by about $200,000.
So, how did you do that? Is it interest only? Is there's no, in other words, there's no principal repayment in the first year?
We're going to put in one $5,000 bond in year one, and make it essentially interest only in year one.
So, so basically, what that does is, what, what was the original schedule that you were using for year one?
Might have been as high as $585,000 at one time in year one. This proposal was going to lower it to 329, and now the new schedule anticipates 286. So, you can see things have been going our way in a nice way.
286 is, is, 286 is what? 286 what?
$286,000 in year one.
In year one.
Principal and interest, yeah.
And, so that would be 5,000 in principal and 181 in interest, presumably, or 281?
281, yeah. Uh huh. But just for example, we had originally anticipated that debt service, if we were paying full bore from the very beginning, might be as high as 581. We're now anticipating something in the order of 565 a year, every year, as, as soon as we start year two. So, this is something that a lot of towns do when they first start repaying a loan. It's, it's pretty normal, and especially because of the press of time and the finally being able to do this issue in 2014. It was, we were never sure whether it would be 2014 or early 2015, but because it's 2014, we took advantage of the opportunity and-
So, can we get a side-by-side comparison of the total debt service, principal and interest over the entire life of the bonds? Scenario A, the one you just presented, versus scenario B, where we're paying a normal first year?
All right. So, Bill circulated a worksheet to you today.
Public needs us.
In Bill's worksheet, he was anticipating that total debt service was going to go up from 16.9 to 17.1, a change of 166,000 over the life. But I'm here tonight telling you that it's really more like not 16.9, but 16.66, so about 800-some thousand less than what Bill was using, even with, with aggressive repayment in year one.
And that's because of the lowering-
Lower interest rates, yeah.
So, 16.9, 17.6, what, I'm, I'm looking at Bill's email. What are you referring to?
Are you looking at?
No, I'm, I'm looking at the text. Hold on. So, but what you're also saying is, because over the term of every year, the, the lower principal and interest payments over those years, it'll still be less, even though you are basically eliminating any principal repayment in the first year, it's still overall, it'll be less because of the lower interest rate.
Yeah, as much as $800,000 less over the life.
Over the life of it. The, what concerns me, though, is that we are issuing bonds that presumably will require a resolution to authorize the increase in tax millage, but we're not doing it this year.
Well, and at your last meeting, you said you were going to take it on a year-by-year, case-by-case basis.
Well, but, but that actually is kind of a, a false, a false premise, and our township manager makes it clear, we, we vote for these bonds, we have to pay for the bonds no matter what. So, the bonds will be paid for, they're the first thing we pay, and issuing bonds is a commitment to repay the principal and interest in front of any, anything else.
That's true. The sunset date of the tax, the special tax, is still anticipated to be 2026. So, basically, we're saying we can live without this increment in 2015. And Bill also provides two hockey-stick graphs showing how the fund balance in that fund is projected to grow. It's difficult to project, but he made an attempt, and it shows that the fund balance in the open space fund grows in a rather healthy fashion. That was also attached to the email today.
Once again, that, that's based on projections for the increase in real estate transfer taxes to fund that.
That's what we have to do.
And, and, and also, I guess, some kind of factors for investment returns as well. So, I, the bottom line is, is that, how can we do this attorney-raise, issue bonds that will require in the future an increase in millage, and then, and not do that this year? So, the issue is commitment for taking on new indebtedness and not, not paying for it. And that's what we're doing. We're not authorizing, we're not increasing taxes to pay for it. We're going to have to do that in the future.
I disagree with that, Rich.
Well, you don't, you don't, we don't know.
Well, we frequently issue sewer revenue bonds that we know will require sewer increases from time to time in the future. We do not put the sewer increases in place to pay for those bonds, but we promise to put them in place as needed going forward. That's the best analogy I can give you for what's happening here.
Well, this is different, because this is, and I would say, I would suggest this is different. This is a specific expenditure for a specific project, and this is pursuant to the open space bond. This is, this is something that's, that's different than a sewer assessment and sewer bonds. We, the point is, issuing bonds, closing on a deal, and not approving the taxes to pay for it. I, I think that's a mistake, and John, you're, you're not saying anything. I presume that you don't believe there's any, any legal impediment to proceeding in such a manner.
No, there's not. And remember that you have an agreement of sale, you have an agreement of sale in place that was approved by ordinance that requires you to issue bonds and do some other things in order to get to that settlement. So, you're bound, once that agreement of sale gets approved, you've got to go to closing, assuming all the other contingencies have occurred. You can't go to closing unless you issue the bonds. You have, I believe, money in your existing open space fund to pay your first year of indebtedness. So, it's not as if, unless you're, unless you want to increase taxes this year with that open space 1.15 this year, I think what Mike's saying is, it's not needed this year. And I think if Bill was sitting here, he would tell you that there's sufficient funds on hand from the transfer tax to pay what you need to pay for the first year. So-
I, I agree with that, but I think that as a matter of good governance, that our view, my view, is that this board should authorize these bonds and not authorize a tax increase, only if we believe that we will never have to increase taxes to pay for these bonds. And I think we're, we can't honestly say that, and, and that's my objection to this. It's not just this year, it's next year, the year after, the year following. And for us to go and say, we're going to have 30-year bonds and never increase taxes as a result of this-
Nobody's saying that, Rich. No one is saying that.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. We are in essence saying that, no, we're not saying that. We're, we're saying we're not going to do it this year, we'll do it next year, right?
If needed.
If needed.
We'll do it next year.
Because you have, you have an obligation to pay that debt down, so.
We have an obligation to pay that debt down, so I think as a matter of good governance, we ought to make, I, I think that we should approve the, we ought to have it on here to approve the increase in taxes as needed, although it's not needed this year, or make some other affirmative, this board, this, this board, I'm not going to vote for that.
I know. Why don't you make a motion to raise taxes?
The, the, no, there's, this is what you voted for, to raise taxes.
We're not making that motion. You're making a motion to raise taxes.
And you, here's what you're going to do. Commissioner Spengler and the other people who voted for this, you will be raising taxes in the future, mark this down to pay for this- this, and you, through the skills of our bankers, are not going to do it for this year. You're going to close on the deal this year, you are not going to increase taxes, and you're going to backload it, and we'll be increasing taxes in the future, and by then, there's nothing that can be done because, because the commitment is made right now. That's what the issue is.
Okay, Commissioner Booker, your objection is very clearly noted. Is there anybody else who'd like to make comments on this?
Just to ask a question.
Commissioner Curly?
Isn't it better to not raise taxes and to fund an obligation from cash on hand? Why would you want to raise taxes this year just for the sake of saying...
Commissioner Higgins, you wanted to raise taxes.
Listen, he's made his objection.
This was your, your issue. The issue now is, you can't, I don't believe you should issue bonds...
We understand, we understand.
Without, without making that clear, and this is kind of, this is a trick that's being played on the public because you will be increasing taxes, just not this year.
I think we started this discussion out with that statement. There's no trickery involved.
I'd like to hear from Don.
Are we using more, more in-house cash in 2015 under the proposal, the second proposal than we were in the first proposal? Is there a greater use of the cash on hand to satisfy that objective?
I think the answer is, if we hadn't adjusted the first-year payment, we might have used more cash than under the alternative, but by reducing the first-year payment the way we are, I think it'll be neutral.
Is there any other commissioner comment?
Well, I, unfortunately, I didn't get the email, and I can't get it now, but I just wanna make sure I understand that if we go to market, you said tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. with this, with this bond, that in fact, it's not costing us a premium in interest charges over the life of the bond compared to if we just went to market tomorrow with a normal bond that is, has a normal PNI in the first year, and consequently, we'd have to raise taxes. I just wanna understand, I know you said, I just want clarity, I can't read the email, so I apologize.
To be as clear as I can, if we went out tomorrow with full payment of principal in year one, that would be cheaper over the life than what we plan to do tomorrow. We could save a little bit.
And how much cheaper would that be?
It could be something on the order of what Bill has in his workbook, which is about $5,000 a year difference.
$5,000 a year over 30 years?
It is.
It is 30 years.
150, he has 160,000, he had estimated.
So, the decision is, in my mind, do we spend 150,000 more dollars and not raise taxes, or do we raise taxes and just get a normal bond with a normal principal and interest first year? That's the question.
John, can I follow that? And it would be discounted 150, right? It wouldn't be 150, but the essence of that, it would, correct?
It's, if it's over the life, a lot of those extras are in the out years.
But the spirit of that is that, and I think that's what Rich is saying, is that we are paying more to not raise taxes next year. How much more is, is up, we're not sure.
Yeah, and there's no free lunch. I mean, anytime someone gives you money for free, you're gonna pay for it at some point. And we have to decide whether, this board has to decide whether or not that's the right thing to do to future board members and taxpayers, you know, to saddle them with 150,000 more dollars of expense, just so that we don't have to raise taxes in 2015. You know, politically, it's really nice to not raise taxes, but not if you're spreading the pain over 30 years.
Well, actually...
Don't take, excuse me, just one second, don't take your eye off of the fact, though, that, yes, it could be a difference of 150,000.
I realize it's an estimate.
It's going to be, but it's not only present value, but it's going to be less than, you know, Bill has modeled.
And I respect that. I understand Bill's model is a model. We don't know whether, until we go to market, we really don't know.
Right.
But we're not going to market twice tomorrow, we're going once, so we don't really have a good comparison. But the reality is, anyone knows, if you, if you don't have to pay principal in that first year, you're gonna pay it in interest over the whole...
Because we are not able to extend the life, we have to take the missing money that would have been amortized and spread it more or less equally over the remaining bond years, yes.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that everyone is aware of that fact, and, you know, I won't support it if we did have a meeting on December 22nd...
22nd.
...to issue a tax increase to, for debt service. I would be voting against it regardless, so, but I just wanna make sure the public knows that in fact, we are not going to raise taxes, but, and, you know, it's not a bad argument, you know, that no raising tax, so residents save money in that first year, but then they're gonna pay just a little bit more for the next 29 years.
And I, just to expound upon that, you're right, it's a very useful thing to point out. It's another way of, like all debt, amortizing the cost over the three genera, or two generations of people that'll be using this land as opposed to front-loading it on the current taxpayers. It's just another way of spreading out the cost on a long-term investment on the people that will be enjoying it over generations as opposed to having us all pay for it as much as we can upfront and then having it be free for everyone.
Well, no, again, I would disagree with that because what we are doing is we're paying a little bit more so that we don't have to raise taxes...
Which is what financing is.
Right, for this year, right? So, what that is, is...
Could I say it a different way? It's almost exact, I would almost say it exactly the same way you would, but after talking to Bill White, my, my answer would be, we're going to pay a little bit more over the life in order not to draw the fund balance in '15 down quite so close to the line and leave more of a cushion than we otherwise would. We want, he's being conservative.
The open space fund balance.
Yes, the open space fund balance. He's being conservative and reducing next year's PNI to leave more of a cushion in the fund.
Well, we, we understand it, the people who don't, they don't, they're not gonna vote for a tax increase. The people that want a tax increase at this board, they're not gonna vote for it.
I don't know that you do understand it, Bill, but...
They're not gonna vote for a tax increase.
All right, I think we beat this dead horse, I think we understand everyone's point.
We could, it's good news.
Yeah, it is good news. I'm really glad that you brought us that news today.
Madam President, this, we could pay zero principal, we could make this all do at the end. We choose whatever year to pay principal and interest. What we are doing here is, again, we have a skillful banker who is able to assist us, and what we are doing is we are letting the people off the hook who want to vote for this, who voted to increase taxes, and we're not making them do it this year, we are, and that is...
Rich, I think you've made your point a couple times now.
It's deceptive because you are actually reducing the amount for the first year just so we don't have to pay taxes, we increased taxes this year just so you increase, just so you can pass this, and then next year, it'll be too late, the bonds are issued, and you're not approving the bonds properly. So, I think that it is poor governance, and it's designed specifically, politically, for the people who are going to increase taxes to allow them not to have to increase the taxes this year.
Well, it's a political manipulation. We're gonna have, instead of having 12 years of the increment, we'll have 11. We're not sticking it out in the end, we're not stretching it out, so...
Okay, so I think at this point, we need officially a motion to table. Do we need to officially table the introduction, or can we just not have the meeting? Pardon me?
Remove the, cancel the...
Talking about the tax ordinance?
Yeah, remove the, cancel the meeting for the 22nd.
Right.
Aye, so move.
So, we don't have to table the meeting?
Well, the ordinance was introduced, do we need to table indefinitely the ordinance, or what do we need to do?
You need to cancel the hearing on it.
Just cancel.
Before you do that, you...
I'm just gonna cancel the hearing, we've got a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other commissioner comment or staff comment?
Madam President, if I may, I know this may not win favor, I don't want to add your question, so I apologize to the board. Maybe just clarification. To my understanding, when you have voted millage, that means the public was asked a question at some point, shall I, shall you raise taxes for a particular question? Which means if it's to the affirmative, it means it's really out of the hands of the board of whether or not you're going to raise taxes or not. You just have that due diligence to raise taxes for that particular reason. So, really, it's out of the hands of the board to do that action. That's my understanding. That's would be like if you went to the public and said, are you going to raise, shall the question be to raise $3 million for the improvements at the library? If the public says yes, then you have that obligation to raise taxes for the $3 million. It's not where the board has the ability to say, well, we're not gonna do it anyhow, the public said yes, you're not gonna do that. At some point, there was a question that was asked, so somehow...
The question is, shall we incur debt? It's not, shall we raise taxes?
Yes, shall we incur debt?
Okay.
And this, this is, this is specific, we need to, we need to...
I'm with you.
And the problem with this, Bob, is that it, we're going to increase taxes, the people who voted for it were going to vote for taxes, and now they have changed it so that they don't need to, and I think that's improper.
Rich, I...
And in any event, in any event, what, what does need to be voted, are you going, there should be a vote to approve this plan of finance, because this is not what we approved in the past.
It's not necessary.
Is there any other comment from staff?
Why is it not necessary, John? This is a different plan of finance than what we approved.
Rich? I do wanna make a comment that I, I don't wanna characterize this the wrong way, but I really believe that there was a lot of pressure put on administration to eliminate any tax increases for administrative costs and capital such that the purchase of the land could be done. So, you know, we're going to have a 4% tax increase to pay for the bonds. There was a lot of pressure put on administration to eliminate any other tax increases because we weren't going to do a 9% tax increase, we weren't going to do a 5% tax increase, we're going to do a 4% tax increase. Now, we're not going to do any tax increase, and the administration's hands have been tied, you know? We've already decided, hey, you're not getting any more money to run the government, you've had to make some really tough choices because we decided in this year to do this purchase. So, I just wanna put that out there. I know there's always pressure put on administration to reduce operating costs, but I just wanna, it wasn't the plan, it wasn't the plan, but the reality is, we went from a potential 9% tax increase down to a 4, and now we're going to a 0.
Which is a good thing.
Oh, it's a great thing, but every year that we did a 0, we regretted it because we can't really afford to run the government on 0 when you have contractual increases every year.
Well, I haven't regretted it. I like 0% tax increases.
I love them too, and I don't regret them personally, but I regret them from an administrative standpoint, that we've, we've been, we've faced some tough times because we had to lay people off even though we didn't wanna lay people off. We had to do things that we didn't wanna do because we did 0% tax increases.
All right, is there any more comment from staff? Any more, any comment from the public on the, well, we had a motion and a second on canceling the hearing? All right, I will go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Cancel, cancel the meeting.
You have comment on this meeting? On the meeting?
There's not an announcement for public comment, and you do have a vote ready.
I actually did announce it. I'm sorry you didn't hear it.
Okay, well, I'm sorry you didn't hear something at last meeting as well, certain "shoot you" comment, but we'll get into that at the end of the meeting. I'd just like to say with respect to this that it certainly has the flavor of kick the can down the road. This Ardrossin funding has been contentious and controversial, and at the last meeting, actually, if we go back two meetings ago, Mr. Nagel left before the meeting was over, and there was a vote whether or not to authorize the millage. I believe I'm representing this correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, and because Mr. Nagel was not here, that vote failed 3-3. And then there was a push to get it back to the next possible meeting, pushed very aggressively by Elaine Paul Schaefer, get into the next meeting. And now, we come here tonight, and we hear that there's actually not gonna be a vote on this at all because of, again, forgive me if I heard it wrong, manipulation. Is that the term of art that was used? I believe it was.
That's the exact term that was used, it's not a...
Being able to sell to constituents the idea of a tax increase, I understand may be difficult, but if it's something that the majority of this board feels is appropriate, there needs to at least be a vote on that, there needs to be a record of it, not creative banking so that this issue is not addressed until presumably December of next year. Now, there might be something going on politically in this township before December of next year, having my problems putting my finger on it. There's an election, right? Next year? Am I correct in that?
Yes, there is.
There's an election? Okay. And I understand that there is a desire not to have to go to constituents and say, yeah, I voted for a tax increase, I voted for increased millage. But that is no excuse whatsoever to say that this issue should be voted on, to after it fails, say we should vote on this at the next meeting, and when that looks like there may be issues in terms of what's going to be publicly represented and what's gonna be publicly voted on to say, don't worry about it, we found something creative we can do, we'll just eat about $150,000 down the line rather than voting on it. That's a very, very, very poor excuse. We'll come back to, incidentally, that $150,000 calculation at the end of this meeting when we talk about what the Radnor Conservancy is contributing to this. Again, because last time I brought that up, it was met with the "somebody shoot you" comment, but in the interim, I will commend the three individuals on this board, Commissioners Booker, Curly, and Fisher, who appear to take significant issue with the fact that a discussed planned vote that would require people on this board to say, yes, because I support Ardrossin, I will support an increased millage, to turn that into, oh, don't worry about it, we got it.
We'll backload it next year.
We'll backload it next year, perhaps the year after that, perhaps the year after that, perhaps the year after that, perhaps the year after that. After all, if we can just continue to do that, why ever vote? Why ever be accountable? Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
The charter suggests that whenever we incur debt, that we have a plan in place to appropriate the funds for that and that we can afford to pay for that. This is a 30-year commitment we're making, and there has been zero vote to fund it. So, would Solicitor Rice explain how that's legal to not fund some debt? It makes no sense to me. How is that possible?
Nina, please give your comments to the board.
Okay, then Commissioner Schaefer, how is that possible to not...
We're interested in your comments.
You know what? It's so disingenuous to ask for people to comment when you're not gonna have a dialogue. The charter states, and, and you guys are supposed to be following the charter. It states openness and responsiveness to township government. A, open public meetings of the Board of Commissioners with the opportunity for citizen discussion. It doesn't say citizen comment and then ignore them. When will you respond to any comments, Commissioner Schaefer? When, when do we get to hear answers to our questions?
You can call me anytime, you can submit questions ahead of time, and we'll address them in our meeting. It's not really an opportunity for public...
Well, in this case, we didn't give the public or the board really any opportunity to know what was going to be said here and to discuss it, so to not respond to questions is specious argument.
We're very interested in your comments and your opinion. That is what public comment is for, is your opinion.
No, it's dialogue to understand so the public gets full disclosure. You are incurring, is it $11 million in debt? Is that what the bond is?
$10.
$10 million in debt. Right now, you're making that decision tomorrow to get a bond for 30 years, and yet, you're not, you're, A, requesting more money because you're not gonna pay the first year. I mean, I've had, we, many people have had debt, we know how to finance it. You finance it, if you don't have the money, you maybe put off some financing, but you're gonna pay the extra amount. I think it was $150,000. So, you are now saying, because you refuse to address it, and I don't believe you legally have the right to go and do this bond tomorrow. Do you have the right?
Christine, at this board, over and over again, we stated that we were gonna raise taxes 0.15 mills for 10 years, we were taking the balance out of the open space fund, at the end of that 10 years in 2026, when another bond issue comes through, the open space fund will have enough money. So, we've stated how we're gonna fund this thing all along.
But you didn't vote on it, right?
We voted on it, and it failed.
It was introduced, and, and it was approved, we had public comment at both times, it was called a parameters ordinance, we authorized for borrowing up to 15 million, so 150 extra is included in that 15 million.
Okay, but you didn't vote to fund it. You voted to, you voted to approve of buying Ardrossin, you never voted on funding it, which was what was supposed to happen that failed in the 3-3 vote, and then it was supposed to happen in the next meeting on the 22nd, and now we're saying we're not gonna do it, we're just gonna skirt that issue of...
Nina, we could fund it completely. Nina, we could fund it completely out of our Open Space Fund, which we are going to do from 2026 on. You don't have to have the tax increase for it. If we have the money in our Open Space Fund, we will pay it through, from that. That's what we've done with the $10 million bond that we took out in the 90s, completely paid without a tax increase from our Open Space Fund. So the tax increase is not an integral part of funding the bond. The decision to pay for it is taking out the bond. And we did that through two votes, through a, an introduction of an ordinance and an approval of an ordinance, up to $15 million.
No, that's incorrect. The approval that we did was for the issuance of bonds. We did not fund, agree to, we did not vote to fund it. This will be like other unfunded liabilities. And that's, that's the case.
The payment's in our budget, and it's funded.
We are in a position to pass an ordinance at our first meeting in January, or the last meeting of 2015, if we need to. Tonight, we're making a decision that we don't need to. We have the money, and we're not going to pass an ordinance that effectuates or brings about a tax increase if we don't have to. That's as simple as that.
But why are we getting a bond if we have the money?
We can pass, we can pass an ordinance anytime we want.
No, we don't. We have the money to pay the bond.
By majority law, by majority law.
We have the money to pay the bond. We don't have the money. So we don't have the money in the account. That's why we're getting a bond. And we do not have the money to pay past year two, because we don't have $11 million.
It's budgeted every year, and it's done in public. And we will, if we need a tax increase, we'll approve it in public. It's all been discussed many, many times.
Well, Nina, I apologize that so much of your time has been taken up by our debate.
And I appreciate that. That is worthwhile and helpful, and I appreciate you doing that.
Especially in this instance. But this plan of finance is different, different enough from our prior plans of finance that, and plus, it costs more. We, we admitted here, it's going to cost more. This should get a separate approval based on what we had understood in, in the prior review of this, the issuance of, of this plan of finance.
Hello, Sarah.
This is, this is different. It should be approved. I, I don't believe that this is valid not to approve this and to issue bonds.
Sarah Pilling, Garrett Avenue, closer to 78 than 77. I would prefer a 1% tax increase, because it's all fine to say you don't. But what happens when the sewer system breaks down, and we have to take emergency money? Then where are you going to get it? What about, it doesn't matter. You have shifted money before. As a senior citizen, I would prefer to know that I have a 1% tax increase in 2015, and maybe another 1% in 2016, because I have a budget. But this, this business of, oh, we don't need to pay it. I don't need 2%, 3%, or 4% in the following year, because, gee, we had a lot of emergency. We got a lot of aging infrastructure. I hear Steve Norsini talking about 36 culverts that need attention. I think you're wrong. I think you should levy the tax increase, so we all know what's going on. That's just my opinion as a 77 and a half-year-old.
Thank you, Sarah.
And dear God, I will not be alive when the bond's through.
Thank you, Sarah.
You may well be.
Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on this hearing? All right, I'm going to call the vote. This is to cancel the hearing on the 22nd. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And it passes by a vote of 4 to 3. Is there any other old business? Is there any, well, we have two items listed here for new business that our staff requested to be put on. The first is discussion of trash collection procedures and process. Mr. Zinkowski?
Sure. Just briefly, what we're going to be doing is working with Steve and his guys in the refuse collection. First, with an educational-type program of going through which items are to be placed on each collection day, from trash to yard waste to recycling. We feel we need to get back to that. The can sizes have grown much bigger. I know that some of the stores, Home Depot and Lowe's, the cans have grown to monster size. And again, it's very difficult for the guys to be able to handle those. With yard waste, also too, we have the tub grinder. We are finding items going in yard waste. Swings are now yard waste, that I'm sure you know. We are also having, oops, these items now are in yard waste. With the tub grinder, they don't match too well. We're also getting a lot of other items that are going, going into those items. I could probably fill this counter that goes through there. It's very detrimental to our half-million-dollar tub grinder. We're finding more and more of that. We're also too, be working with the police department, because there's a lot of landscapers now that are bringing in their leaves and that, because we know that, we can tell based on size of yard, that there are some yards that there is no way that there are that many leaves, based on the trees that are in that yard, that are coming out. We're also having leaves now that landscapers are putting leaves in the middle of the street, or actually blocking lanes of traffic, that we're going to be working with. Styrofoam is being put out too, as part of recycling, which you can't. So we'll be going into, the first phase of this will be a educational-type component. There's a lot of cardboard that's going out on trash days or that, that needs to be put back. So this first wave of this will be going into the educational process of that. So we're going to look at trying to put that out the first quarter of this year. So we'll be looking at everybody trying to work with us on that. So that covers that end. So we'll look for the commissioners to help support our, our guys on that aspect of it. We'll be looking to update the website, get a lot of information out with that. Because again, I think the guys do a tremendous job on, on that part. In regards to the second item on the update on the pilot program, last Wednesday, I met with Representatives of Villanova, Cabrini, and Eastern. I thought we had a good and productive meeting. We agreed that we would meet again in January to further our discussion, to try to find some mid-ground, and try to work towards, and develop some alternatives that would be acceptable and agreeable to all parties. And as soon as we have something, we would bring that back to each of our organizations, bring it back to this board to see what would be acceptable. I know there were some comments and suggestions made, that we would engage some of our residents, several commissioners, community groups, also to be part of this conversation, I think, to move this along, which I thought was very good. So I think we, after probably a little interesting conversation, I think we, we found mid-ground there, and I think we're starting to move in the right direction here on this. So we will again, continue to update the board on our progress with this. But I, I'm happy to report, I think we're headed in the right direction. I want to thank all the schools for their cooperation in this, this effort. And with that, that ends that part of this, the report.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Is there any other new business?
Okay, I just have one item, one that President Schaefer had spoken about earlier tonight. I had requested at the last public meeting that the discussion of whether or not conditional use order, orders can be discussed in executive session and debated. I did agree via phone with Commissioner Schaefer that this could be delayed until January, such that our solicitor could prepare his legal arguments and position. And I think that's a good idea. But I just, I think it's good to address this tonight. I'd just like to make a comment. I, I don't necessarily need to debate the whole thing tonight, because I, I respect John's need to prepare for that. But I just want to, I just want to put my personal position out on this. The, the conditional use hearing process was a very public process. And we, we, we basically had a series of hearings, six or seven hearings, where the public came out, the, the parties, the vested parties, made their opinions known. They, they had conditions that they requested of the university. And then the Board of Commissioners proceeded to discuss those items in executive session. I wasn't really aware that was the process we were going to follow. If I'd known that, I would have probably, you know, John may have said, we'll discuss an exec, but I didn't realize what that would mean. I just want to state that I think it would have been far better for this township to take the high road, adhere to the charter 100%. I, I recognize, under the Sunshine laws, we're not required to adhere to the charter, but the charter requires us to adhere to the charter. So in, in this, I believe the issue of public participation, openness, and transparency is the most important issue here. And I have a lot of constituents, especially in my ward and Bill's ward, that were really disturbed by the process that we followed at the very end. They appreciated all the process up to that point, but the process at the end, where we came out with a pre-written order, didn't necessarily debate every element, every condition that was requested by the public. We didn't put any of those to the vote in public. We only put a few of the ones to vote, that I had requested, and maybe Commissioner Booker. The point is that this board really wants to be transparent, really wants to take the high road, and really wants to do everything in public. And I think we got some advice from our solicitor, that, you know, whether it was good advice or bad advice, I don't know. I don't really care. It's legal advice. It's legal advice. But we have moral requirements. We have sworn to the charter, to uphold the charter, the Constitution of Pennsylvania, Constitution of the U.S. We, when we take office, we make these pledges to do this, and then something like this comes up, a very public process that has a profound impact on the residents, and then we make a decision, in essence, in executive session, and then we vote on that decision in public. Maybe there's legal basis, maybe there's legal standing to do that, but there's requirements under the charter, and requirements under our own sense of what the public wants to do it differently. So I'm going to suggest that in the future, we will never do it again. That's what my suggestion is. I think we have to recognize that there's a difference between legal rights and doing the right thing. Okay? So we, we know we can get, you can get any lawyer to tell you that you have legal rights, you don't need to do this, you don't need to do that. But then there's the moral law of land that says, you know what, even though you don't need to do that, you should do that. So I'd rather take the higher moral ground here and do these things in public. And I think we would have led to a better outcome, especially on the order, because in the end, the things that were really important to my constituents were not even voted on in public. Their, their, their asks, their positions were not even voted on by this board. They were considered, they weren't ignored, they were considered, but there was never a public discourse. The public was never given a chance to raise those items. Okay? We voted on an order. There was not opportunity. So that's my comment. I'll wait until January, and John and I can go head-to-head on this. But it's not really a legal argument to me. It's, it's more of a moral argument, and our adherence to the charter, which we are bound to when we take office.
And, and I would add to that, that when we started discussing these elements in executive session, there's not much we can do as commissioners. We have to either participate or say, well, we're going to, I'm going to leave and, and not have any opportunity to participate. So while I did have some concerns at the time, I did decide to participate. And I, I believe that John will tell us, and I think he said to us, that, that the potential for litigation over these issues, he felt was sufficient. But I, I won't speak for John. John, you can, you'll explain it however, whatever, in essence. So it's, it's a kind of a gray area. But what I would say is that, for many of the people who were involved in the conditional use hearing, so many people, people here in the room, the friends to preserve Radnor, the folks over here, Tish, and Ms. Bailey, all the folks, Roberta, all, everybody who has, who has been a part of this, I really appreciated their efforts, appreciated your efforts, appreciated your dedication to it, and the money that was spent in preparing cogent and legitimate arguments. And also, even our own staff had comments over here and over here. But I, I just disagree with John that they were considered seriously. I don't think that they were. I think that they were ignored, and I apologize for that. I also apologize that we did discuss these items, not in the public, but we, I, what I tried to do was get as much out as we could, and go through various items, so that the public could hear at least the discussion. Nonetheless, I think that is something that is legitimate for review of the process and the procedures, and that, my view is that we certainly had more leeway to debate the merits of individual conditions that would be proposed on the conditional use approval in public in the first instance. So that's my view on it. We'll hear more in the future, and John will provide a more substantive analysis of, of the rationale, why we proceeded the way we did. But as it stands, I, I, I do agree with the sentiments that have been expressed, and wanted to add my own. So thanks for that.
Anybody else? Just to remind everyone, this will be on our next agenda. We'll have a full briefing from our staff, and it will be posted the Thursday before, so everyone can take a look at it, digest it, think about it, and we can have a very informed discussion. Okay. Public particip-, I believe, is there any more new business? Public participation.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. Make five points, one statement and four questions. The position that John Rice needs until January to prepare a legal memorandum discussing why it was appropriate for this board to meet an executive session is ridiculous. This is what John Rice said specifically about why this board was able to meet an executive session. You're allowed to meet an executive things, excuse me, you're allowed to meet an executive session for things beyond what's in your charter. You've done that traditionally over the years. That's John Rice. John Rice could have until the year 2364 to come up with a rationale as to why this board was able to disregard the charter, and it won't matter. He's not convincing you that chocolate is better than vanilla. He's trying to convince you that chocolate is vanilla. It's incompatible with the charter. You can only meet according to the charter under four enumerated exceptions, period. The Sunshine Act in Pennsylvania, my letter to you, but I'll read it to you again, states very specifically, very clearly, very unambiguously, that, quote, "Nothing in this section," nothing, nothing in this section, or Section 707 relating to exceptions to open meetings, shall be construed to require that any meeting be closed to the public. It's not possible to have a conflict with the Sunshine Act in that regard. You are not compelled by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to go into executive session for any topic. Therefore, when John Rice says, or may say, in a legal memorandum, that Commonwealth of Pennsylvania law trumps local law, he's not being accurate. It is silent as to that. Sunshine Act only comes into play if you're meeting in executive sessions for things outside of the Sunshine Act. First point. Now, four questions, all of which require one-word responses. To John Nagel's apology, I didn't get a chance to ask this during opening comments, because Commissioner Schaefer cut me off. Mr. Nagel, I understand that you will probably not comment what specifically it was that you said. But since your email to me dated this morning states, you would like to express your sincere apologies to Dan Sherry for, quote, "my outburst" at the last commissioner's meeting. Would like to ask you, sir, just yes or no. At the time of your outburst, were you utilizing the highest standards of morality?
Mr. Sherry, please direct your comments to the board as a whole.
Directing it to John Nagel.
I'm asking you not to.
It's either a yes, a no, or a no comment. Will you answer that?
Mr. Sherry, I'm asking you to direct your comments to the board as a whole.
Will you answer that? Will the Board of Commissioners ask John Nagel to answer that, yes or no?
I, we will not. Please proceed.
You will not. Will the Board of Commissioners ask John Nagel whether or not, at the time of his outburst, was his conduct above reproach? Yes, no, or we will not require John Nagel to answer that question?
We're, we're looking for your comments right now, Mr. Sherry.
That's the comment. Are you going to answer that? Or, let me ask you this. Are you going to give John Nagel, John Nagel leave to answer that question? That requires a yes, a no, I don't know? No, you're not going to let him do that. Okay. I wonder why.
Well, I think John can answer if he was, if he wants to.
Do you want to answer that question, Commissioner Nagel? Do you want to answer that question, Commissioner Nagel?
You know what? I'm running this meeting, I'm presiding. I'd like you to address your comments, your opinion, your comments to the board as a whole. Please keep this civil.
Civil? Well, that's curious. I've never actually called for anybody at a meeting to be shot. I've never called for at a meeting, a commissioner to be decked, as quoted attributed to Commissioner Spingler. I've never advocated that somebody should be punched out, heard by John Nagel. So I'll take a little bit of exception to the phrase, keep your tone civil, when I ask very straightforward questions that John Nagel refuses to answer, and Elaine Paul Schaefer gives cover for him not to answer. Last question, this is a question for the staff. I read today in the Main Line Suburban Life that in addition to being counsel in the appeal of a local veterinarian's ethics complaint against Jim Higgins, Solicitor Rice has not only filed a dispositive motion, but is actually seeking to have fees recouped. I was reminded that at the last meeting, I didn't get too much of input when I asked this board about John Rice's repeated statement that he recused himself from that ethics investigation, as to why he is now participating in the appeal. What I would like to know, and it's a very simple yes or no question, pertains to a statement that Solicitor Rice made during that meeting. He stated specifically as follows. "Yeah, I did, I did, I did recuse myself." That's four assertions that he recused himself. I then asked, you recused himself? He said, yes, five times, saying he recused himself. I then asked, was that announced to the Board of Commissioners? Solicitor Rice retorted, no, and it doesn't have to be. Further elaborated, the rules of professional conduct have rules with representation, and I recused myself. That's six times, I recused myself. And it was an obvious potential conflict. Read the rules, Mr. Sherry. That was at the November 10, 2014 meeting. Did John Rice, subsequent to that time, come before this board and ask the board to waive the obvious potential conflict? Anybody answer that?
Madam Chairman, I would ask that...
The conflict on the representation?
Excuse me, Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
I don't recall that.
I have a point of order. I have a point of order.
Ah. By the way, the person asking now for a point of order is the person who is the subject of that ethics investigation.
I have no compunction...
Subject of the ethics investigation and is interrupting me with a point of order allowed by Commissioner Elaine Paul Schaefer.
The point of order, Mr. Sherry, would you look at me, please?
I have an answer from Commissioner...
Mr. Sherry, with all due respect, would you look at me, Mr. Sherry?
...was not obtained. I don't have to look at somebody who is not the parliamentarian, who is trespassing on my time...
Well, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
And is the subject of this ethics investigation.
Your time is up. You're now about seven minutes beyond...
Now that I have heard from Commissioner Booker that John Rice...
Mr. Sherry, I'm going to answer at this point.
...of John Rice seeking a waiver of that conflict of interest, the obvious potential conflict, that is extremely disconcerting.
Mr. Sherry, we're at seven minutes now. I'm going to ask you to try very hard to wrap up.
An obvious potential conflict of interest is admitted to by John Rice. A statement of recusal made seven times, and yet he appears in the appeal of this matter as counsel, and he doesn't come before this board before then to even seek a waiver of that obvious potential conflict? That is shocking. I believe we'll hear more about that coming...
Unless the chair waived, maybe, maybe it didn't come to all of us.
How curious. Did that happen, Commissioner Schaefer?
And maybe it wasn't necessary.
You know what? I'm going to ask that you wrap up your comments now, Mr. Sherry.
He previously also asked if it wasn't necessary to tell you all that he actually had recused himself in the first place. Fascinating. I learn something new every time I come to a commissioner's meeting. You all have a wonderful holiday. It should prove very, very intriguing in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to give us public comment?
This private meeting that took place was a meeting where Mr. Rice negotiated with Villanova, and when Commissioners Fisher and Booker raised the issues of having a turning lane so as to deal with the flow of traffic, to have additional stormwater to deal with the effects of increased building, and sequencing, paying to sequence lights so traffic flows on Route 30, Mr. Rice repeatedly just said, no, they just won't agree to it. By what authority does he have to negotiate on your behalf? Additionally, he basically gave you two answers, say yes or no to the plan. It wasn't, no, we're going to refuse on stormwater, or we're going to refuse on turning lanes or sequencing lights, make them pay for it. And you guys kind of all fell for it. No offense, but you guys all fell for it. You're letting him take you down a road that is very slippery. Mr. Fisher, you kept saying that this is a moral issue. It's not a moral issue. It is a legal issue. You are bound to follow the charter. The charter says you can't have these private meetings. This is not hard. The charter says if you request, or you request to have something on the agenda, it's on the agenda. You guys don't optionally get to decide when you want to follow the rules. So I would say you have to redo that meeting in public, have the whole conversation in public with Villanova present, ask those questions again. There's no such thing as moving forward. Well, moving forward will pay for the bond. Moving forward won't have any more executive sessions. No. Right now, you guys demand to have that meeting again, and the vote again. You guys are in a pickle, and you might get sued. Why? Because of him. Because he did this in executive session, and he's costing us money. When are we going to put the solicitor's job up for a vote? That's a different conversation, but I think you guys need to put that on the agenda as well. Last point, who is the zoning officer? I haven't been very involved lately with that particular issue. Do we have a zoning officer, or is that outsourced?
Bill Miller.
Bill Miller.
Is the interim zoning officer.
Okay. Does Bill Miller see all those plans that, like the plan that Villanova just put forth? Does Bill Miller go and give a, you know, like this situation specifically that's coming before us of putting forth a plan that was prior not conforming? Would he be the one that would give the reading on whether that's legitimate?
Roger Phillips would look at the plans, and then he would consult if there was a zoning issue with Bill.
And Bill gives some legal rationale?
If there's an issue that gets raised during the course of the...
But John, shouldn't that have, shouldn't that have happened before it came to us under caucus? That's usually done first, right?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think that issue was raised until tonight. It's in Roger's letter, as if it's a nonconforming setback, but it's now come up, it's something that Bill's going to have to look at, and Roger's going to have to go to him and make a determination as to whether or not Villanova can put this, a new building in the existing setback. And their argument, I'm guessing, is that they're not increasing the existing nonconforming setback. I think there's a 120 setback, and they're at 99.
But again, I think we, we agree, we agree that, you know, that's not normal. So what normal is, is that you have to go to the zoning hearing board. If you're going to tear down the structure and build a new one, you need to go to the zoning hearing board. The zoning officer normally would opine that they don't have a vested right once they tear the building down. So there's a process anomaly, I'll call it anomaly, that normally, I'm not going to say mistake, I'm not going to say disagree.
Process anomaly, I'm going to use that next time.
He's not, he's not going to look at every plan that comes in at the front desk, in most cases.
Okay.
This is not every plan. This is 45,000 square feet.
The Senior Code's official role is to, in fact, review every plan that comes in. So every plan needs to be reviewed, every, and if there's a nonconformity, that nonconformity has to be evaluated and determined whether or not it gets to be carried forward or not. And in this case, again, I've had other residents try to do this, and it doesn't work. It's like you get, you get reset to zoning hearing board.
So I would just ask you regarding this particular issue, that you figure out what went wrong in the process, that it didn't get there first. Because in page like three, it says this is a nonconforming use, so therefore, somebody should have said, wait, are we allowed to do this? So I don't know if that's Mr. Zinkowski...
Nonconforming front yard setback, a front yard setback, or...
Right. Setback from street... Yes, and I, I did not hear that there was a mistake. I heard Roger say that he believes that they don't have to go to the zoning hearing board. We'll find that out, but I don't, I'm not sure that there was a mistake at this point. My understanding of how it works is that our staff will look at it. If our staff sees zoning issues, then they would defer it to our zoning officer. It isn't, it isn't an automatic deferral to the, to the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board would only be called into play if the staff made an adverse determination of the application.
But I think that's what happened. When you ask for nonconformity, you are therefore, by default, asking for a variance. So there are variances...
Well, nobody has made an adverse determination yet. So what, what I heard, the determin, what I heard happen, which might have been different than you, and maybe I was wrong, but what I heard Roger say is that he believes it was, it's allowable. And that I heard others say it's not allowable. I heard some uncertainty, and I heard that that would be evaluated. But I did not hear that there was a mistake made, and that it should have been done a certain way or differently.
I totally hear you. My last comment is, in the olden days, even when things were bad, the zoning officer, when we had one on staff, and I don't know, maybe Bill is on staff, but the zoning officer always signed off on every single plan and made sure that we were following the rules. And if they, they realized we were not following the rules, they were the ones who kicked it to zoning before it even became, came before you guys. So I would just look at that process and try and tighten that up to make sure that the zoning officer looks at these plans, especially a 45,000 square foot plan. So thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment?
Jane Gally, Barclayton Road in Rosemont. I would like to thank Commissioner Fisher for his commentary on the process that went through with, all of a sudden, you have 17, but we couldn't get 18 because Villanova won't do this. This was like deja vu for when they put up South Campus. And, you know, things got pushed through, and the neighbors kept saying, you know, this is not good, this is not, and we were ignored. And the result of it was three feet of raw sewage in the basements of people that lived on De Baron Road. I don't want this to happen again. We are going to have to have trucks turning down Ithan Avenue. I'm sorry, if you don't think it's not going to happen, you're living in La La Land. I just want you to use your brains and understand that just because Villanova wants something doesn't mean that the constituents get thrown in the trash can, which unfortunately seems to happen. That's all I have to say, and I just wish you used good sense and say, there will be semis that pull into a huge complex, bringing food, whatever, whether you believe it or not, that maybe the 150-foot turning lane would be a really good idea. So I thank you, Mr. Fisher, for your comments, because, you know, like, be sensible. I don't know why sensible and seems to be out of fashion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Hello, Phil?
Good evening. Philip R., Meredith Avenue in Rosemont. I just want to change the subject just for a brief second, and, and thank you, the board, for your approval of the greenways and open space trailways plan. I happen to be honored to be on that subcommittee. There are other people in the audience tonight. Gail McCloskey was in attendance earlier, and Jared Lowen was here from Simone Collins, in case you guys had questions, which you obviously did not. But we appreciate your approval of that and your overwhelming endorsement of it. We hope that it's a plan that 20, 30 years, whatever the long term is, that it's something that we're all proud of afterwards, and, and that we can pass on to our children. And thank you also for asking us to extend, there was a consensus that we would be willing to do that, and not only come up with the plan, but under the able guidance of our, our committee chair, Cheryl Tamola, we had a nice plan, and we were able to go ahead and, and wish that we were involved in the process to make sure some of this happened. So we're glad for that opportunity, and I'm sure you guys will work it all out as to how to do that. That's one point, so thank you. Secondly, I just wanted to briefly underscore the importance of the review that you've been talking about, about the executive committee, what's appropriate, what's not. And we're all familiar with what the seven, six exceptions are in the state and the four that are in the municipal code, so I won't go into that. But it's important. It's important to Radnor, it's important to our citizens, it's important to you folks as board, as the board commissioners, because it borders on the issues of, important issues of transparency and trust. You know, the outcome may have been the same, but the process matters for people to be heard and understand what's happening. So I support Commissioner Fishers and others who have asked to continue to review that. And just, just to give you a quick idea, you know, this is an issue, by the way, that is not peculiar just to us. You don't have to scratch very hard into the surface to understand that this is something that a lot of communities have a lot of issues with, and they need to talk about in discussions as well. We're not the only ones that this affects. I briefly found, from Widen University, Citizens Guide to the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. And I think there's a, there's a quote here I wanted to bring up to you, because it's a, I think it goes to my point. After they talk about the six exceptions for executive committee, that you can go ahead and talk privately, they follow with this paragraph, this is their interpretation. They say, despite the fact that such executive sessions can be held without public participation and attendance, the public nonetheless has the right to know what the topic of discussion will generally be at such sessions. They want to cite a court case where this was determined and interpreted, Redding Eagle Company versus this council of City of Redding. And they put in, as a parenthetical note, which they're probably quoting from the actual decision, stating that executive sessions under Sunshine Act can only be held when reasons are given in order for the public, quote, "to determine from the reason given whether they are being properly excluded from the session." So the public needs to know why they weren't there, and that's the reason. And I will suggest to you that that was one of the issues that was at play in this recent instance. Nobody knew that this happened until it was brought up during the course of the discussion, and it was not forthcoming from the board, it was coming from questions that were coming from the public. So the public does need to know that. It's important of trust. And so what I will suggest, barring John Fisher's suggestion, is that there are legal things that you can do, and I'm sure you may come up with a legal narrow definition of what's possible, that as an interpretation, that will stand, and that's fine. But I encourage you to go beyond that and to talk about what, discuss amongst yourselves and agree to what it remains to a higher standard of transparency and trust between the board of commissioners and the citizens. So thank you. I look forward to that discussion in the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Is there anybody else who'd like to make public comment?
Good evening to you all. I just have a statement pertaining to the procedures. Every sitting commissioner pledged to take an oath to be the voice of their constituents. Nowhere is it approved on a continual basis to allow that trust and existing bond between commissioner and resident to be broken. Calling residents jackass, telling a commissioner, shut up, and the most egregious act of all is saying, someone shoot him. If this isn't addressed and acted upon quickly, the board as a whole will have failed to do what they have pledged to do. In this instance, the failure to do so will put into question the legitimacy of the board, and the democratic process, and the democracy that we all tout so proudly is actually an illusion. Every citizen of Radnor, and for those of you who are watching now on TV, who values their right to liberty and the pursuit of happiness, should call their commissioners and demand action to be taken on the issue of John Nagel's continuation on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make public comment?
Roberta Winters. I don't have my league button on, I'm speaking as a citizen. I've been in many meetings in my life, and one of the phrases that comes to mind is something that a very wise man said to me, and that is, where you stand depends on where you sit. And I think that's food for all of you to think about. And I'd also like to advise you on something else that I've learned when I was on the state board and doing a lot of advocacy work. And whenever I had a question about what to say, or where I should stand, I started by reading the Pennsylvania Constitution, and I read it over and over and over again. And I think it's really important that our elected officials read the documents that have put us into the places we are, so that we can, again, act on what we should... have put us into the places we are, so that we can, again, act on what we should do in the most civil and reasonable manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. Is there anybody else who'd like to make comment?
Move adjourn.
All right, can I motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.